Good morning and welcome to the July 12, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. Commissioners, we have a full agenda this morning, including our recommended budget discussion for the 2018 year. And I would like to remind you of a few things going on this weekend. This Friday evening, Interest Bank Arena will host Neil Diamond and his tour. And then this Sunday, beginning at noon, be sure to head out to the Sedgwick County Zoo for chimps and salsa with Mexican food vendors and music and full of fun. And with that, I will let you get started with the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Kate. Appreciate that information. And we want to welcome everyone who's in the board meeting today and those that are watching by way of television. At this time, I will call to order the regular meeting, excuse me, the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, July 12, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation, to be led by Reverend Sherdo Brethett, Sr., St. Mark's United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, Commissioners. Let us pray. To the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, dear God, we petition you this morning for your guidance and wisdom for this commission, that they would make sound, informed decisions. And God, that we will remember not to take you for granted, but to realize all that you have provided for us. For God, we often refer to you as Jehovah Jireh. You're the one who provide for us and meet our every needs according to your riches and glory in Christ Jesus. Now, God, we just ask that you just have your way and that we've promised to give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise in that name that is above every name, the name of Jesus Christ, that every knee shall bow and every tongue confess to the glory of God. And all God's people said, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Ranza?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Chairman Enrew.
Present. And Commissioners, before we start through our agenda, I would like to make a motion that we defer item F on the agenda. That's an item that has to do with a resolution authorizing the establishment of a pedestrian crosswalk signal on the carther. And I think this is not the time to go forward with that, and I would like to move that we defer that item.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Howe?
Mr. Chairman, I understand, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I understand that this is, there's some items about this that need to be worked out, and I appreciate the fact that we'd like to, I guess, table this for now or defer it for now. But if there's anybody here that wants to speak, that's taking the time to come up here and speak, I would hope that we would give them the opportunity to make their, say whatever they want to say about that, if that would be okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. When public agenda's next, and we'll allow people to speak in the public agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Counselor, you look as though you'd like to say something.
We also have another item that we probably are going to need to pass over. Do you want to include that in this motion or do you want to make a separate motion?
Is that on the consent?
It's the EMS.
Item G.
If it doesn't make difference one way or another, I think the rest of the items we can take in order.
Okay.
I wanted to do this early just to, I know there's folks here who want to speak on item F, and I thought that I could let them know at the outset that we're not going to take action on it and that, as Commissioner Howe suggested, they can speak now or they can wait till we deal with this issue for a vote at a future date. I hope that's sort of clear to everyone so that they can make a good decision here, but is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye. All right. Now we are ready for the public agenda, and we do have some folks who have signed up to speak on more than one issue here. And so, first person who signed up, I think, is Ricky Nelson, who I guess wanted to speak on the item that we just deferred. So if you'd like to speak now or if you'd wait till, if we bring this up later.
I wish that we made it later.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner.
Troy Nix, is he?
Commissioner, or Chairman, if you could, just clarify, later means if the item comes up at another BOCC meeting.
Correct.
Not later on in this, in this meeting.
Correct.
I don't know if that was clear or not. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Troy Nix is another person, want to speak?
Hold.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next on the list is Linda McMillan.
I'll leave it to her.
All right. Also, you will defer. And Ann Windsor?
Hi, I'm Burke.
All right. Thank you. We have Nate Davis, who wanted to speak. If you'd give us your name, and you have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Nate Davis. Some of you are new to me on the commission. I've been here a few times, speaking in support of the Boys Ranch over the years, and that's what brings me here again today. I understand this is an issue that, you know, might be put back for later, but I wanted to talk about the history of the ranch. Over the past couple of years, I've had the opportunity to talk to many people who were involved in the ranch through a documentary that I'm filming about the ranch. Through my experiences and my speaking, I ran across a lot of other people who had stories to tell, who had perspectives that I felt like were important, so I picked up a camera and decided to talk to them. And it's those experiences that I just want to share with you guys today, as you make a decision on whether or not to bulldoze that and make it a state park or use it for other community groups in the future, whatever that may be. A few of the people that I got a chance to talk to were the daughters of Judge Riddell, and they shared some stories with me about their family and about the days that he was going around, speaking to different groups, trying to raise money for the ranch. He had gotten an architect to build a little model for him of his dream, of his idea of what the ranch should look like, and he carried that around to different community groups on the weekends and in the evenings and stuff, and he would drag his wife and his kids with him to go hear him talk about this, this Boys Ranch that he had in his head. And they were there to watch it become a reality. And I really enjoyed talking to them and hearing about those dreams that he had. And now, as a former resident and as a case manager who was impacted by the ranch, it just gave me a really good perspective on his dream and what it became. That dream can still be used, you know. I understand that the ranch is closed. I understand that it's not going to be reopened as a Boys Ranch. Those boys now have to go somewhere else, most of them out of the county. But that ranch and that property was designed with Sedgwick County in mind. There's plenty of places that we can camp. I'm an outdoorsman. I love taking my boys out fishing, and we go out to Lake Afton a lot, and I've had opportunities to show them the ranch and tell them, you know, in their six and seven-year-old minds, what they can take, what that, what that place meant to me, and how my life was impacted by being there. But it's not going to be best used as a campground or whatever it would be used once it's bulldozed. There are many other community groups that can utilize that space, that can utilize that area. It's, I don't know what it is, $200 and some thousand dollars that you guys are going to need to bulldoze. That can be better used as something that can generate more life-changing experiences in the future. So, I had a lot to say. I'm just frazzled. I have a difficult time speaking in front of, in front of you guys, as you've seen before, but that's the gist of what I wanted to say. I'm just asking you to keep the property as what it was intended for and utilize it the way that it was intended.
Well, thank you for your comments, and I think that you would get 100% agreement that the concept and the success of the Judge Riddell Boys Ranch has been remarkable and a great asset in our community. The issue now is not, you know, what happens in the past, but what happens going forward. But I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Howe, did you want to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to just make a couple of quick comments. I wanted to say thank you to Nate for coming this morning. I know he has been following this thing, this discussion, for many, many years. I was brought into the discussion, I think, in 2012, and you were already, you were already, you know, at the podium, before I even became aware of this discussion. You were there, fighting for everyone to kind of understand the importance of JRBR, and I just want to say thank you for all you've done. And if anybody hasn't seen it, I decided to go and post it on my Facebook this morning, but Nate Davis has done a series of videos. One of those, I guess the series is entitled "The Last Chance Ranch," and I guess in some ways, that's kind of prophetic for today's discussion, because this discussion will be whether we're going to go forward and, you know, raise the building and turn it back into park property or do something different. So that's our discussion this morning. But his video series is called "Last Chance Ranch," and they're short videos, like three or four minutes each. And I think the best one that, out of those, I decided to go and post that on my Facebook this morning. If anybody's interested in that, they can go to my Facebook and find that. But I would say you're a very good filmographer, or, I'm not sure what the right term is there, producer, and you do a good job of, I think, talking about our history. We should be very proud of our history. This is something that Sedgwick County started back in 1959 without state funding.
Absolutely.
And we have had about 6,000 boys. These are medium to high-risk youth, boys that were treated by our Sedgwick County program that had, when I say medium to high-risk youth, these are boys that have committed crimes of some sort. And a judge would look at that young boy, 13 to 19 years old, I think, and it would say, I think this young man could get some treatment and probably get him on a, on a better path. Maybe he's got some domestic issues at home, maybe he's got some gang problems in his community, maybe there's some substance abuse things going on there. But this judge, for whatever reason, sees something good in that young man, and so they send him to JRBR for a period of time. And then it's more of a family setting, solid structure with a different environment these kids are used to, and it puts them on a better path. And 6,000 boys have gone through that, many of them, most of them, I would imagine, have become taxpayers, family, have families of their own, some of them have businesses, many of them work in our community, but changed their direction, the crimes that did not get committed, the things that did not happen that were negative to our community, the change between what could have happened and what did happen is astounding. And so, again, my, my connection to this is I've been trying since 2012 to highlight this and bring some attention to this, and I am proud of Sedgwick County for their front-end investment on this program. It did eventually transition to a state program, and that's where the problem started, much like the discussion I think Commissioner Ranza was going to bring up. When you take federal dollars or state dollars with strings attached, it kind of changes the discussion. And so, this morning, we're going to be talking about $7100 back in 1966, which has changed our discussion about this entire facility. Maybe that wasn't the best thing for us to do, is to take that money and limit our choices going forward. But this program, which was a Sedgwick County program funded by the county, became a state program, and then we, we've eventually decided that we wanted the state to be fully responsible for all of the financial responsibility, and to the extent that that wasn't going to happen back in 2014, this program did shut down. I wanted to just reflect real quick. You did say a majority of our boys are out of county. That is true. I got a snapshot this morning. 10 of our Sedgwick County boys are out of county right now, today, this morning, getting their residential treatment. And I was, I was told that we will always have a need for some residential facilities. Some of these kids that aren't in a YRC-2, some of them are in JDF, some of them end up in a juvenile, I'll use the word, it's a youth prison essentially, because of the things they've committed, those types of crimes they've committed. And then, as adults, they end up in our jail or prison. And so, these are very expensive issues to not solve on the front end when you have an opportunity. And that's kind of the whole idea behind JRBR. But right now, we've got 10 kids out of county, right now, we have zero beds for females in the state. So there's no females in a YRC-2 in Kansas right now. They're all somewhere else or not being treated. And then, I'll just tell you, one of the years, one of the recent years here, 90% of the juveniles that were admitted to JRBR were successfully completed the programs and had no recidivism in 12 months. The last six months that JRBR was open, they had 92 students that completed school credits. We had seven total graduations of those students that were there, graduations from high school, and they did, many of them, over 300 hours of workforce development for these kids in 2014. That was the year we shut this down. They only had six months of programming. And that very year, we had over 300 hours of workforce development for these kids. And so, again, this is a tremendous program in our history. As we move forward into this discussion today, I'm sure our focus will be on the, on the other aspects of this decision in terms of whether we should raise this building or delay that or whatever we're going to do there. But since you did come this morning, Nate, I wanted to talk about our history as JRBR and the good things that Sedgwick County has done in the past. It's a very positive program. We invested in it, and I know that even when Commissioner Norton was here, he'd say, either you pay me now or pay me later. And I think we have had a history of doing things on the front end, knowing that we're saving tremendous pain and suffering for our community and have a very positive program. And so, I still am a firm believer, this is the right way to go. I know that I'm in the minority, I think, amongst many people perhaps that have kind of moved on, but I just want to reflect upon our history, that we did do a really amazing job for over 50 years, since 1959. Sedgwick County has really helped a lot of kids in our community. And so, with that, if there's a way for us to use this facility for good, that's what I'm interested in, in talking about going forward. What that, what that is, I don't know. We have, I'm sure the discussion's going to change in some other direction, no doubt about that, but I do want to reflect on our history of how we've helped thousands of boys, including yourself. So thank you for continuing to remind us of that. Thank you so much, Nate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Yep, thank you.
We have one other person on the public agenda, Mr. John Peterson.
I'm Burke.
All right. Thank you. I think that's all of the folks on public agenda. Is there anyone that I am missing that wanted to speak? I don't see anyone rising to speak, so Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of June 7, 2017.
Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes of June 7. Are there any additions or corrections? It's a will of the board.
Move to approve minutes, June 7. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item B, presentation of the county manager's 2018 recommended budget.
Good morning.
It's my honor to present to you today the 2018 County Manager's Recommended Budget for the Sedgwick County organization, and this will include Fire District number one. In this document that you were just handed, or believe this document that you were handed the other day, it's about 802 pages long, and the lengthy process that went behind it this year, a little bit different than last year, especially with the reorganization and the new executive team. The executive team making up the core of the budget development team, along with Lindsay and her staff and Finance Department. But also with a new budget director, with Loriann Showalter-Ary as our new budget director, so that's great. But most of the finance team is new. But all the employees in each department and division worked hard on this budget that we present to you today. But before I go any further, I would like to note that yesterday, we received word that we received a particularly high rating from Standard &amp; Poor, which affirmed our Sedgwick County's AAA rating. It was even better than anticipated, noting, and I quote, "A very strong management with strong financial policies and practices under our financial management assessment methodology." So I'd like to congratulate Lindsay and her team, her entire team, on this stellar recognition. But what's even more significant about it, this S&amp;P rating came after our audit. So the budget forecast information that was submitted after, on January 21 and after, basically responding to S&amp;P's questionnaire and their interaction with us, was based off the decisions that we have made for the 2018 recommended budget, but also on a lot of the policies and procedures that we have changed or updated, not only since the fraud incident, but also since the, since the audit, or ongoing process of continuing change. But this was really what led S&amp;P to give us, you know, the AAA rating, which is huge. So it should give everybody and the citizens of Sedgwick County great, you know, relief and, and understanding that we're doing everything for the best interest and taking our fiduciary responsibility very seriously, and that's what related to the strong AAA rating. So, but before Lindsay walks you through the budget, I wanted to highlight some of the goals that you outlined for me and for this budget team to use in the budget development process, and then some of the expectations I had in developing it. So at the outset of this year's budget process, you told the staff that you wanted a targeted flat mill levy of 29.359 mills. You also wanted a recommended budget that would not require an election under the new property tax lead, that was balanced and that would not substantially reduce services. You also wanted to be sure to address concerns that you heard from citizens, especially on their flooding issues. As you said, that some strategic and moderated use of debt was acceptable to help meet organizational needs. With your goals in mind, also provided some extra direction to staff in submitting the budget requests and developing their recommendations. I wanted to focus on the priorities outlined in our new strategic plan, and those four core priorities provide a clear direction for where we are as an organization and where we are headed. Our goals for the year, everything we budget for should fall under one of those priority areas: safe and secure communities, human services and cultural experiences, communications and engagement, and effective government organization. Further, I wanted to address the highest priority concerns you identified, along with the needs identified by our district attorney, district court, and sheriff, and other divisions throughout the organization. It also was important to me to continue to focus on employee compensation. Last year in the 2017 budget process and in this 2017 budget that we're currently in, we spent a lot of time focusing on compression, oppression issues, and, and making sure the employees were compensated fairly and appropriately. So the recommended budget that you're about to see was created to ensure that your goals were met and the strategic priorities are funded at an appropriate level to achieve desired results and to manage the space needs of our organization. We have strived to maintain delivery of quality public services while reducing the amount of outstanding debt, incurring no deficits except to reduce special revenue fund balances to targeted levels and targeting a flat property tax rate. I encourage county staff to develop flat budgets, but I also understand there are many areas that may need additional funding. Public safety will continue to be an area that we have to focus on and provide extra resources as it continues to grow in requirements. Also, physical and digital space management was a big issue this year, stormwater management, as I said earlier, and additional election requirements. Even with these, though, it was important to keep our priorities and mission in mind. Every budget recommendation I'm making is with the intent of preserving the county's sound financial condition, as outlined in our recent audit, while moving forward with the priorities outlined in our strategic plan. In safe and secure communities, we focused on improving flood control, though we know there's still a long-term need. Space needs and technology needs are also an important need for this focus area. Within the Fire District, I'm pleased to recommend a budget that projects a surplus for the first time in many years. It was made possible as a result of higher-than-projected growth in the district's assessed value, but also because of management decisions to revamp the district's vehicle replacement plan and to begin efforts to restructure the administration of the Fire District through attrition. While we still have a need to develop a long-term solution for the Fire District, we have made significant progress in my recommended budget. This budget also reflects the first year where fire employees will be treated similarly to other county employees, and it provides equal pay increases to county and Fire District employees, which I'll address more specifically in a moment. In human services and cultural experiences, increased funding was included for the Arts Council, as well as for the CDDO provider capacity. For communications and engagement, I'm recommending funding for 10 new election polling places and additional funds for community engagement and outreach. In effective government organization, I am again recommending a focus on employee compensation, particularly through a pay adjustment of 2.5%, along with an increase to the overall pay structure of 0.5%. This pay adjustment will apply to county and Fire District employees alike. I'm also recommending increasing the efficiency of programs such as moving the housing program to the city of Wichita and realizing savings due to the move of several county organizations to the Ronald Reagan Building, resulting in savings from eliminated lease and utility costs. It's essential to note the need for two internal financial auditors to see through the changes outlined in the audit that we presented to you yesterday. So Commissioners, I'm pleased to recommend to you a 2018 budget of $425,233,884, which also includes a $407,275,187 for county government and $17,957,696 for Sedgwick County Fire District number one. The recommended budget is based on a flat property tax rate of 29.359 mills for Sedgwick County and 18.414 mills for the Fire District. This budget was produced through a priority-based budget process, achieves the county goals as outlined in strategic plan, and fulfills my stated objectives. As a balanced budget with targeted bonding necessary for managing the capital improvement plan, thank you for the privilege of serving as a Sedgwick County manager, and now I'll turn it over to Lindsay to give you some more detail.
Thank you. Good morning.
All right. It is my privilege to present to you the details behind the 2018 County Manager's Recommended Budget. Before I go into those details, though, I want to reiterate the county managers' thanks to Loriann Showalter-Ary, the leader of the budget team, budget director, and- to Lori and Sho Walter Arie, the leader of the Budget Team, Budget Director, and also the staff, including Kami Carlston, Carly Sanchez, Brandon Mills, and Todd Kowalba, who are instrumental in putting together this recommended budget document. That is eight hundred and two pages, as the Manager pointed out. It's a lot of work, and we're very proud of the work that they've produced. So going into this budget development process, I just want to reiterate some of the goals and principles that the Manager already has outlined for you. First of all, you told us that you wanted a targeted mill levy rate of 29.359 mills, and so that has been fulfilled in this recommended budget. In 2016, the Legislature passed what is called the Property Tax Lid. At the outset of this process, you told us you wanted a budget to be recommended to you that would not require an election under that new legislation, and this budget fulfills that as well. You wanted to address citizen concerns, particularly with regard to some of the drainage issues we've heard about over the last eight months. You wanted a balanced budget. With regard to the General Fund, you told us you did not want a deficit, but within our, as the Manager said, special revenue tax funds, and a deficit was acceptable so long as it was intended to help us reach a targeted level, and we'll talk more about that later in this presentation. You also said that in this budget, you didn't want us to see any substantial reductions in service, and you would find it acceptable to use moderated and strategic use of debt. Further, the County Manager outlined that he wanted to focus on those priorities in the strategic plan, which he spent some time talking about. You wanted to address the highest priority needs, not just of you as the elected officials, but also other elected officials within the organization, and you wanted to address those highest priority needs identified by divisions in their budget reviews with you back in May. Further, you wanted to see some improvement in that storm drainage and flood control issue, and this budget does that, and we'll talk more specifically about all of these in just a few moments. And of course, the Manager wanted to continue to address employee pay issues. So as we move through this presentation, we'll take it in multiple parts. First, we'll look at the operating budget. We'll look at it from a fairly high level to a more detailed level. Then we'll move into the revenues that will support that operating budget. We'll talk about some of the highlights within the operating budget. We'll move to the CIP. Then we'll talk through the forecasts and address the remaining key dates in the process. So as the Manager said, this recommended budget totals $425,233,884. Of that, it comes from two separate legal entities, county government and Fire District. The county government budget is roughly $407,276,187. The Fire District budget totals $17,957,696. And as you can see on this table, those budgets remain relatively constant over time. Getting into the details, starting at a higher level though, you can see how the budget falls across our four strategic priorities. You can see the bulk of the budget, nearly half, is dedicated to safe and secure communities, about $194 million. Next, in terms of order of significance, we have the effective government organization at about a third of the budget, 31%. Then, human services and cultural experiences at 22%. And finally, communications and engagement at 1%. And just to clarify what's included in that communications and engagement portion, that would include the Commission, the County Manager's Office, and elections. And so that's why you do see a $6 million figure there. Moving into function, this is how the budget book is broken out. You can see that public safety still retains the highest portion of the budget at 39% or about $163 million. General Government has the next highest amount at 28%. It's worth noting that within that $120 million is roughly $19 million in contingency funds that we don't necessarily plan to spend, but that's where that budget authority is assigned. Within human services, we have 16% of the budget. Public Works, with regard to their operating budget, has 7% of the total budget. And debt service has 4%, and you can see the remaining community development and culture and rec both have roughly 3% of the budget authority assigned in this recommended budget. We spend our money on a variety of things. As you can see from this chart, personnel continues to be the largest single expenditure category for the county and Fire District at about 50% of the budget, or roughly $207 million. Contractual services are the next highest amount of spending. This would include things like our utilities, inmate medical services, some of those items that we may not provide the service directly, but certainly it's a service that needs to be provided. You can see next that we have debt service. This includes not just debt service on facilities and roads and bridges, but this also includes the debt service paid by the Fire District for their significant equipment, their heavy equipment like squads and tenders and engines. And then you can see the remaining portions of the budget are significantly smaller, but certainly not any less important than the others. By fund type, the General Fund, of course, is the biggest fund that we have in the county. It serves the operations of more than 40 county divisions, and it is roughly $209 million. We also have debt service of about 4% of the county budget. We have the other tax funds, including the Fire District, that together make up about 15% of the budget. Then you'll see the non-tax special revenue funds. This includes things like the solid waste fund, the District Court Trustee Fund, and grant funds. And then you'll see internal service funds. These are things that are provided within the organization to other divisions, so things like fleet management, the Health and Dental Life Insurance Fund, fleet management, and risk management. Next, you'll see the enterprise funds. This is simply the arena. Historically, this also included the pavilions. To support this operating budget, we do have revenues that are generated through property taxes. And as we've already discussed and as the Man- 9.359 mills in this budget. Coming up, we'll talk about the last update agenda item that will, of course, clarify that this is the estimated tax rate, and we'll know the final rate in November after the county clerk provides that certified value to us. The Fire District in this budget is estimated to have a mill levy rate of 18.414 mills. This is identical to the 2017 adopted budget amount, and as we talked about with the budget, you can see that these mill levy rates are fairly constant over time. More specifically, talking about other revenues that are supported through this budget, of course, our property taxes are the bulk at 87%. I'm sorry, 34%. Our other taxes are 14% of the budget. This would include things like motor vehicle taxes and sales and use taxes. And our governmental revenues are those revenues received from the state and federal level at 10%. Charges for service are those that are passed along to users of our services, and those include things also like the mortgage registration fee. That's approximately 27% of our budget revenues. Then we have other sources of revenue through fines and forfeitures, investment income. Those total about 6% of the budgeted revenues. And then you'll see that we plan in this budget to support the remainder with fund balances through about $36 million. For clarification, roughly $25 million of that fund balance is within the County General Fund. And of course, we talked earlier about the $19 million in contingencies. We don't tax or plan to bring in revenue to support that contingency budget authority. The remainder would be essentially in personnel, where we have the budget authority because we do budget by position, but don't necessarily plan to spend every penny. As the Manager talked about, the Fire District, for the first time in some time, has a budgeted surplus. And so this slide calls out a portion of that total $425 million revenue we just looked at on the prior slide. In this budget, you'll see total revenues of $18,397,244. The bulk of that, of course, is from property taxes. That's the primary source of funding for the Fire District. But you can see the other sources of funding, charges for service, some modest investment income that comes into this. At the bottom of this slide, you'll see that the total expenditure budget for the Fire District is $17,957,696. So you can see that in that, we have approximately $400,000 greater revenue budgeted than expenditure budgeted. We know that there are still some issues long-term within the Fire District, and those will need to be resolved, but certainly this is progress from where we have been in past years. So moving then to highlights of the operating budget, we'll talk about these within the context of the four strategic priorities. So first is safe and secure communities. We talked about your expectation, along with the County Manager's expectation, that flood control and improved drainage be incorporated into this recommended budget, and so that's what you'll see here. In addition to the other funding that the Manager highlighted, we will continue to provide half of the funding for the Wichita Valley, I'm sorry, for the City of Wichita, Sedgwick County Flood Control Agreement at roughly $1.1 million. That essentially funds the administrative portions. In addition to that administrative portion, the city and the county each also put up $500,000 toward the MS Mitch Mitchell Floodway, which used to be referred to as the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Floodway. And that is approximately $500,000 each year in all five years of the long-term CIP that you'll see. This budget also adds to equipment operators and equipment to the Public Works budget to improve stream maintenance work, and that totals roughly $382,000. Also, as we had already talked about during the solid waste fee adoption agenda item, the $1 increase in solid waste fees generates approximately an additional $226,000 to be put into the Public Works budget to go toward further storm drainage cleanup. And then finally, the storm debris contingency that was eliminated from the budget a couple of years ago has been reinstated at a lower level, $250,000. And we'll continue to have discussion throughout this year to determine how that contingency can be used going forward. There also is the technology and data review and public safety component that you heard much about during your budget reviews, particularly from the District Attorney, District Court, and the Sheriff. Within emergency communications, we know that our computer aided dispatch system is nearing its end of life. And so a million dollars is dedicated in this budget toward replacement of that system. We also heard during budget reviews that Corrections currently has a number of databases that they use that don't necessarily talk to one another and that also are nearing end of life. And so another $250,000 has been included in the 2018 recommended budget toward that. Within EMS, you heard about their critical equipment needs for their first responders. That totals about $160,000 for replacement of those TOF books. Within emergency management, you heard two requests from those folks when they presented during budget reviews to improve the hardware and software within the Emergency Operations Center, to provide increased communication within the emergency operations system. You also heard from the Sheriff about a need to replace and increase the amount of data storage that they needed. And so this budget includes an additional $100,000 for the Sheriff to replace that server. Also, as we move through the process, we heard that there were a number of needs where the actual specifications weren't quite yet known. And so this budget includes $100,000 of increased authority and the operating reserve so that we can study those, and when we have a better idea of what those needs are, we will have a funding source dedicated to that, particularly that came up with regard to the District Attorney with body cameras and still trying to better understand the full impact of those. Finally, the District Attorney also had asked for four part-time crime analyst positions. These would be folks who would review the discovery from body cams and the video and highlight those things for investigators or for attorneys. And so that is in the budget at about $87,000. We also know that there are space needs that will be addressed through the capital improvement plan, and we'll talk more specifically about how that's done. But just to highlight some of those needs you heard through your budget review process, we know that the District Attorney here within this building is facing some significant space challenges. We also know that the District Court believes it is only a matter of time before their increased number of judges and support staff that will be necessary. And at this time, the building simply doesn't have the space to accommodate that. If county administration moves out of this building, we heard at a staff meeting, then that the main courthouse could accommodate those additional District Court and District Attorney space needs. And so that is something that you'll hear more about during the CIP presentation. We also had heard discussion about elections space needs. We don't exactly know how the Homeland Security decree that her election equipment is considered critical infrastructure will impact the county, but certainly that's something that needs to be on the radar so that we can respond. And then finally, we heard about EMSS space needs to move them out of their current space and closer to downtown so that they can better serve their partners. The final priority to discuss within safe and secure communities is the Road and Bridge Capital Improvement Program. And this budget includes a shift in both the way we do roads and bridges. Historically, road preventive maintenance has been done one mile every five years. This budget will shift to a long-term change of one every six years. That will result in estimated savings of about $1.8 million per year. We also talked about bridge repair and replacement. And historically, Public Works has tried to do, on average, 12 bridges per year, roughly six in-house and then six through the CIP process. This would contemplate doing 10 bridges per year, also for savings, although the savings can vary depending on the type of bridge work that's being done in the year. This CIP does contemplate targeted bonding in the first three years of the CIP. $3.45 million in 2018, $1.8 million in 2019, and $865,000 in 2020. Shifting then to our next strategic priority, human services and cultural experiences. There is increased funding for culture and recreation within this budget. The funding agreement you approved earlier this year did include some additional funding for CIP, and so this budget reflects that additional increase of roughly $400,000. There is a restoration of funding to the Arts Council, which had been cut a couple of years ago of about $15,000. And finally, there's actual designated funding for the Wichita River Fest in this budget. In the past, they have come separately each year to request that funding. As we heard during your budget reviews, there are mostly flat budgets within human services, but there are some increased funding highlights here. Within CDDO, the server, or I'm sorry, the service provider capacity program was included in the last three years. It was scheduled to end in 2017. This 2018 budget extends that and adds $250,000 to the CDDO budget. There's also increased funding for adult private immunizations within the Health Division of about $88,000, although we do anticipate that fees will be generated to fully cover that additional budget cost. And also, there's increased compensation for those com care employees receiving licensure. And so the total impact is about $44,000, but the bulk of that will be absorbed within the com care grant fund. Shifting then to our next priority, communications and engagement, there is increased funding for divisions and partners. As the Manager said, he's recommending funding for an additional 10 election polling places for about $26,000. And then funding also is being added within the County Manager's budget for increased community engagement and outreach of about $10,500. Shifting then to our final strategic priority, effective government organization. The Manager mentioned that he had the focus in 2017 on employee compensation and continues to focus on that in this 2018 recommended budget. This recommended budget includes a recommended 2.5% across-the-board pay adjustment for employees, so it would not do the same pay-for-performance model we've used in the past. This is being done to avoid any damage to those 2017 compression adjustments where employees' pay was corrected. And further study on that will be done and an additional discussion included in the 2019 budget process. This recommended budget also includes a 0.5% adjustment to the overall pay structure. This will increase both the minimum and maximums for our current pay- This will increase both the minimum and maximums for our current pay grades, and essentially what that will allow is our divisions to recruit employees at that higher minimum level. Also, it will allow our more longer-tenured employees to receive base pay increase if they otherwise are already maxed out under the current pay structure. And then there is an increase of three point six percent for our health insurance premiums. You might recall that throughout our budget discussions, we had planned for five percent, so while this is an increase, it's not as much of as an increase as we had anticipated. This budget also increases the efficiency of programs. As the manager talked about, the Sedgwick County and City of Wichita Housing Programs will be merged into one entity to be managed by the City of Wichita. That will result in a decrease of the county's budget by about one point one million dollars, the bulk of which were in housing grant funds. We also were able to eliminate some costs from the budget and produce some savings by moving the appraiser and some com care and aging functions that currently are in leased space into the Ronald Reagan Building, and so those savings are not insignificant. And in the budget also, as the manager talked about and as we alluded to during our discussion at staff meeting yesterday, adds two point oh FTE, internal financial auditors, to help us craft those policies and procedures that we need to then help get that information out to divisions to ensure that it's being done consistently, and then to go back and constantly evaluate and monitor that, and also serve as a liaison between county staff and external auditors. This budget also funds, as with every year you hear about this, the increased costs of doing business. Just like at home, our costs here continue to go up every year. We need to be able to pay our bills. For the Sheriff, we know that our inmate medical service contract includes an escalator of three percent every year. In addition, we heard about the overages that have been constant for the Sheriff over time, and so this budget includes about five hundred nine thousand dollars to increase that. We heard from the Election Commissioner that the new equipment we received, along with the state voter registration database fees, are all going up, and so this budget reflects the addition of about three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars to the election budget to pay for those needs. We also heard from the District Court about their need to stay competitive, or at least to be able to fully assist their attorneys in covering their own overhead costs, and so this budget includes two hundred thousand dollars for that, along with thirty thousand dollars for increases in interpreter fees, increased utility costs of about one hundred ten thousand dollars for things like electricity and water, increased costs associated with software maintenance agreements in our IT area of about a hundred thousand dollars, increased commodity costs for EMS for things like drugs and other materials, and finally, increased funding for animal control, for animal shelter fees, and that's roughly thirty thousand dollars. So moving then out of the operating budget into the Capital Improvement Plan, the first area we'll focus on is facility and drainage. This is simply the 2018 portion of the Capital Improvement Plan. This closely resembles the tentative CIP that was presented to you back in May. First of all, the adult detention needs its flooring removed and replaced, and so that will be done at a cost of six hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars. Continued efforts to comply with the ADA of two hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars included in the 2018 CIP. The replacement of county parking lots is included at one hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars. Also, at adult detention, there's a need to replace the joint sealings at a cost of one hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars. Replacement of county roofs at one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars. And then outdoor warning device, more commonly known as our tornado sirens, the installation and replacement of about one hundred ten thousand dollars is in the 2018 CIP. At Sedgwick County Park, you heard about their need for the vault-type toilet. That's to be funded with special parks and recreation funding of fifty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars. And finally, as we discussed earlier, the five hundred thousand dollars for the repair and major maintenance at the MS Mitch Mitchell Floodway. Moving then to roads, this reflects only the county portion of funding. Within the preventive maintenance program, this nine million dollars does reflect that shift to one mile every six years rather than one mile every five years. There's also continued funding for the I-235 and US-54 interchange. You'll see that this number reflects three point six million dollars. Down below, you'll see that there's total bonding of six hundred thousand dollars for this slide. Six hundred, that six hundred thousand dollar bond goes toward a portion of this I-235 and US-54 interchange. There's also the cold mix and gravel road replacement program that's included in nearly every year's budget, nine hundred thousand. Traffic control, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Miscellaneous drainage projects, this is in addition to the information you saw on the slide before, five hundred thousand. There is a road project on Greenwich from Harry to Pawnee of five hundred thousand. The Northwest Bypass Right-of-Way for three hundred twenty-five thousand. Utility relocation and re, right-of-way, excuse me, two hundred thousand. And then finally, the multi-use path on Rock from Derby to Mulvane of two hundred thousand. And so this total slide reflects fifteen point seven seven five million dollars of county-funded projects, and that, those bottom two bullets show that cash and bond breakout. Moving then to bridges, there are four bridges included in the CIP for construction. You can see those listed here along with the amounts. They totaled to two point eight five million dollars. That is to be funded with bond proceeds as well, and then you'll see there are two additional bridges where right-of-way and utility relocation costs are included in the CIP, each at one hundred thousand dollars. So in summary, for the 2018 Capital Improvement Plan, you'll see that facility and drainage totals just more than two million dollars, all to be funded with cash. Roads includes fifteen point seven seven five million, of which six hundred thousand dollars will come from bonds, the remainder to come from cash. And bridges include three, just more than three million dollars, of which only two hundred thousand dollars comes from cash. The total 2018 CIP that you'll see in your budget book is just less than fifty-nine million dollars, but that reflects not just the county portion, but also any external partners we have, like the State of Kansas, or federal funds that come in, and so this slide only highlights the county's funded portion. Moving then to the outer years of the CIP, 2019 through 2022, just some highlights. For facility and drainage, there is funding included for the, an administrative building and the main courthouse remodel. The administrative building is roughly sixteen million dollars, and then there's about seven point five million dollars in additional costs for remodel of this building. There's three million dollars included for an elections building. There's a variety of projects for EMS, including a new garage, a new west post, and replacement of post one, which is down here close to Riverside. There are also a couple of corrections projects included, there HVAC and facility improvements. There's also continued investment in that major repair and maintenance of the MS Mitch Mitchell Floodway of five hundred thousand per year. There is strategic bonding included even in the facility projects in the outer years of the CIP, and we'll look at the highlight slide here in a moment. And then within roads and bridge, within roads and bridges, excuse me, we will implement maintenance on an average of one hundred lane miles per year. Again, that's that shift of one in every six years. Repair, replace an average of ten bridges per year, and of course, there is that limited strategic bonding of road and bridge projects. So highlighting just those four years, the outer portion, you can see that the county's portion is roughly ninety-one point nine million dollars, of which about a third comes from facility drainage at thirty-four million dollars, of which about twenty-seven million dollars will be for bonds, most significantly for that county administrative building and remodeling work that will occur then in this facility. About forty-five million dollars for roads and twelve million dollars for bridges. The total 2019 through 2022 CIP is one hundred point four million dollars, but again, this ninety-one point nine million dollars reflects the county's portion of costs within that CIP. So taking all of those years together, 2018 through 2022, you'll see that the county's portion then comes to one hundred twelve point seven six million dollars, and you can see the breakout here. You just heard all the details, and so I'm not going to subject you to that anymore. So then moving to the impact on the forecast of this recommended budget. As we had said earlier, you expressed an expectation and a goal that this recommended budget not show any deficit in the general fund for 2018, and so that goal has been achieved. There is a modest surplus in the general fund. There is a strategic drawdown of fund balance to targeted levels in our other special revenue tax funds, and we'll go through that in a moment. With regard to the long-term forecast, there are surpluses projected in outer years of the forecast, even with some of those strategic drawdowns we talked about before, and once we get to those targeted levels, the plan is to continue to maintain the fund balances at that level, and so you'll see that here in a moment. Overall, this is our, when we take all eight of our county property tax-supported funds together, you'll see that in aggregate, this recommended budget includes about a half-million-dollar deficit in 2018. Again, that is all due to the strategic drawdown of fund balance in some of those special revenue tax funds. The gray lines on this chart show you what you had seen back at the retreat and also during your May reviews, and you can see that this has increased tremendously from what you had seen then. And again, you can see in 2021 and 2022, overall deficits, or I'm sorry, overall surpluses are projected in those years. Within the general fund, this slide near the bottom shows you the anticipated operating results for each year. You can see that in 2018, this forecast includes a surplus of about twenty-three thousand dollars. In 2019, a surplus of about one point three million dollars is projected. There is currently a deficit projected in 2020, but we do have some significant radio replacement projects occurring in that year that we plan to fund with cash. That's the primary reason you see that. And then in 2021 and 2022, you can see those surpluses. The bar chart is pretty interesting for us to look at. You can see that the blue lines reflect our overall estimated ending fund balance. The black line shows our minimum fund balance that we need to maintain per policy, and you can see that at no point in this forecast do we envision going below that minimum, and certainly this is an improved situation from where we've been in past years. Moving then to our other funds within the forecast, just to illustrate what that targeted drawdown actually means. Within EMS, we want to get down to about a one-million-dollar fund balance. We make these targets based on the type of fund, we're talking about the type of activity that occurs, along with the type of revenue that comes into the fund. Is it a more stable revenue source, like a property tax where we can pretty well count on the funding we'll receive? Or is it something that is less rigid, something like charges for service in EMS where variations can have a significant impact? And so we want to have a larger fund balance in EMS of about one million dollars to ensure that we can withstand some of those variations. Bond and interest is a good example with EMS. They're both approximately the same amount of budget, but you'll see that our targeted fund balance for bond and interest is less because of the type of revenue that comes in, and also because it's much easier for us to know exactly how much we're paying out of that fund each year, so a lower fund balance is acceptable. Looking at the highway fund target balance, that balance that we want to keep there is about five hundred thousand dollars. Also, within Public Works, there's the Noxious Weeds Tax Fund, and we want to keep that at roughly one hundred thousand dollars. Within the Aging Tax Fund, our goal there is about two hundred thousand dollars. We have the same target balance for com care. And so that's the forecast. You can see that it's a much improved result from what you even saw back at your May reviews. So in summary, this 2018 recommended budget totals four hundred twenty-five million, two hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars. It supports three thousand five point four-two FTEs, and this slide breaks out how that falls across the county and Fire District governments. For our remaining steps in the process, we do have quite a few. Your first public hearing will be next Wednesday in this room at nine AM. We'll have a social media town hall the following week, with the second public budget hearing to occur on Monday, July 31st. Budget adoption is scheduled for Wednesday, August 2nd, and per state law, we'll get the certified budgets turned in August 25th. From now until budget adoption, we will have an opportunity for the public to comment online. That is listed here, if anyone wants to go and do that, and then you'll hear more from me in a moment about last update, so I won't bore you with that. With that, I'm happy to stand for any questions, or if Mike needs to come up, we can address any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and before we forget to do so, we would also like to express our appreciation for the hard work by your budget team and your county department to provide the information and to keep us moving forward to this point in time, so thank you for all that hard work. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments on the budgets? Commissioner Ranzau.
Yeah, Lindsay, I see we're going to do a, build a bathroom at Sedgwick County Park. Are we going to take any federal dollars to assist in doing that?
No, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Commissioners, any other comment? Thank you, Commissioner Ranzau, any other comment? This is a good time. All right, well, we have been, so the public knows, commissioners have been trying to stay abreast of these developments and working with Lindsay and her staff on various issues as we've got to this point, so I think that to this point, we are relatively satisfied with what we've seen. But here's a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarification, since the chart that talks about the mill levy is kind of a coarse line, it's hard to tell, but can you please remind us what the mill levy is for 2017 budget, what we ended up with after the technical adjustments for county government as well as the Fire District, please?
Sure, so for the county, it's twenty-nine point three nine three mils, and for the Fire District, it is that eighteen point four one four mils.
So, so twenty-seven, 2017, it was eighteen point four one four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, it's all my questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else requesting to speak, Lindsay, so thank you for that. Mr. Manager, thank you for that presentation, and I believe we'll move now to the next item. Does that require, that requires, I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to your statement file.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I don't think there's any discussion, so Madam Clerk, call the room.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Unruh?
Aye.
Now, next item.
Item C, authorize the publication of a maximum property tax levy to fund the 2018 Sedgwick County budget and establish public budget hearings on July 19th and July 31st,
Lindsay Poi Russo, your CFO. The item before you this morning is similar to what you've seen in the past. It is a request for authorization to publish the notice of final public budget hearing, which also establishes the maximum budget and the maximum property tax levy for the 2018 budget. State law does require that the county publish the time and place of a budget hearing at least ten days prior to that hearing. The notice must include a summary of the proposed budget that includes the maximum proposed spending for a given year, the maximum property tax levy proposed to fund the budget at a fund level, and this date is often referred to as the last update because after this point, the total budget for property tax-supported funds and the maximum property tax levy cannot be increased without republishing the required notice and holding another public hearing. The maximum proposed budget for Sedgwick County is four hundred seven million, two hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars, to be funded with a maximum proposed tax levy of one hundred thirty-seven million, four hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars. In accordance with the Target Mill Levy Rate Resolution, the proposed tax levy is based on an estimated mill levy rate of twenty-nine point three five nine mils, as indicated in the earlier presentation of the recommended budget. No election is required under the property tax-led legislation passed by last year's legislature. So in addition to the public hearing that will be held in this room on Wednesday, July 19th at nine AM, this publication will outline that the final public budget- 19th at 9:00 a.m., this publication will outline that the final public budget hearing will be held here in this room of the county courthouse on Monday, July 31st at 6:00 p.m. Budget adoption is scheduled, of course, for August 2nd. I'll be happy to stand for any questions. If there are none, I recommend you authorize the publication.
All right. Thank you, Lindsey. This, being a last update, I mean, this is kind of driven by legislative calendar and dates where we have to publish and, as you just went through. I guess the point I'm trying to make is that oftentimes, we'll have a last update after we've heard the manager's recommended budget, and the calendar just didn't work out that way this year. But what that means is, if we're going to make any modifications, then it has to be, excuse me, within that number.
Right. Or we come back and do it again.
We can't, we can't make any additions to that, to that number if we get contact by citizens without reducing something else, or go through that laborious process that you described.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's a significant thing we're doing here, last updates kind of thing I'm making. Commissioners, are any comment or question? If not, we need, we need a motion for last update, and we need just the Sedgwick County motion at this time?
Yes, sir. Please.
That being the case, I would move that we authorize the publication of a notice of public hearing regarding the Sedgwick County 2018 budget. Publication shall include a total budget of $407,276,187 and an add-on property tax levy of $137,441,377, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. Commissioners, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've had information, explanations, motions, and now commissioners, if there's any discussion before we vote on this important vote, now's the time. Seeing no one's asking to speak, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you.
And thank you to your staff. Next item, please.
Item D, a conditional, county conditional use for a cemetery on property generally located on the south side of West 69th Street North, 1,600 feet east of North Meridian Street.
Dale Miller, Planning Staff. This is a request for a conditional use to permit a cemetery on 20 acres that are currently zoned, single-family 20. As you can see here on the slide, the pink represents the SF 20 zoning. The application area is the rectangle shown in the electric blue, I guess, would be the Cemetery is to be developed in four sections. There's a site plan that was included in your application, or in your packet that we'll get to eventually here. But you can see that property to the north and the east is zoned SF 5 and is in the, or at least is single-family. It's zone, it's in the city of Valley Center. The property to the west and south is, is also zoned SF 20 and is owned by the same person that is selling the land to the, to the applicants for the proposed cemetery. It's farmland today. The land to the north, you can see there, is developed with single-family homes. And then to the east, there are also single-family homes on somewhat larger tracts. The farm ground that is to the south and west, it's somewhat hard to see, but there are at least three oil wells on the property that is adjacent to the application area. There is also a high-tension electric line that runs east-west here across at least a portion of the area. And according to testimony that was provided at the planning commission, somewhere in here are also some pipelines that run, run through the area. That would complicate single-family development in the rest of the tracts. As you can see here, it is identified as being in the small-city urban growth area of Valley Center. There are protests of 6.49% by one, one person owns all of the individual parcels here. Because the protest does not equal 20%, this can be approved with a simple majority. Planning, like I said, the planning commission recommended approval 11 to 1. There are conditions that they applied that are in your staff report, but essentially, they were requiring fencing, landscaping, permits a 32-square-foot sign, should they want to put one, and parking would be determined by a parking study. Here's the site plan that the applicant provided, showing how it would be developed and the sequencing. And I don't know if the applicant is here, but I'm trying to answer questions and...
All right. Thank you, thank you, Dale, for that presentation. I think we've all been briefed on this issue. Before we go any further, now might be a good time for commissioners to declare if they've had ex parte communication on this zone change. I would say I have not been in, not been contacted by anyone, so... Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, I want to state publicly that I have had ex parte communications with several people in my district who are concerned about this. They're concerned that it will have a detrimental effect, and it's not appropriate for this area, and doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood. And these are things that I think are worth, you know, that should be considered in this decision-making process. But I did want to state that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else want to declare ex parte communication? Since this is a zone change case, it's not a public hearing, but we would allow citizens to speak if there's someone here who wants to speak on this issue. If not, then we will restrict the comments back to the bench. And commissioners, any comments or questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question, I think, the other day when I was reviewing this, this proposal regarding the long-term care for this cemetery. And I know there's been some cemeteries in the county that basically filled up and they stopped selling some of the lots in that cemetery, because I think it was filled. And so the question is about long-term care, once that happens, how this might impact the county or city, should it be annexed? Would you be able to comment on how this is taken care of 100 years from now?
I'll take a stab at it, but legal staff may want to help me out. But my understanding is, whatever jurisdiction the cemetery is located in, whenever it ceases to operate the way it should and doesn't have any money to maintain it, then it becomes an obligation of the jurisdiction in which it's located. I'd let Justin confirm that, or...
Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Howell, your question, Dale's response was correct in terms of, if it gets to that point, there are some state statutes that apply to cemeteries and require them to maintain trust accounts. I don't believe those are necessarily foolproof, and, you know, that it's not possible, I think it is possible that a cemetery could, essentially, the cemetery corporation could become defunct, run out of funds, whatever the case may be. So the intent behind the statute is to provide that trust account for maintenance issues. But again, I don't think it's, you know, 100% sure that you couldn't have that happen. And Dale's correct. If the cemetery runs out of money, is disorganized, whatever the case may be, the authority, the municipality that it's in, whether it's the unincorporated area, in this case, which it is, or if a city had annexed that property, then they would be responsible for the maintenance of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. As I'm reading the backup material now, it's interesting to me that, I guess I am seeing some of the information here. I guess just for full disclosure for anybody who might be listening in today, this is a little bit different than other cemeteries. Not a, not a major issue with me, but I just want to make the point that apparently this is a Muslim cemetery, I understand? Not that that makes any difference to me, but I just was curious, is there any differences between this cemetery and other cemeteries as a consequence or a result of it being a particular religious sect or whatever? Is there any difference between this cemetery and any other cemetery?
At the planning commission meeting, they indicated that they would be using natural burial, which does not require vaults or coffins or embalming. And based on information that we read in an article, there's a Catholic cemetery in Bel Air that has set aside an area for the same thing. There may be other cemeteries, but our understanding is that's becoming a more prevalent practice across the country, and so hopefully that answers the question.
Okay. And of course, obviously, that's something that Kansas law apparently allows, that type of, that type of burial, of course, it sounds like it's already being done, so that shouldn't be an issue there. But I guess it's just an interesting, an interesting aspect of what this is going to be. Are there grave markers in, on these graves?
I believe that there, there was no discussion about there being any prohibition. I assume that there will be, but I, I don't definitely remember.
Again, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor, just wanted to mention, I believe at the planning commission meeting, the applicant did note that there would be headstones. I can't recall the specifics, it may be in the minutes in the backup materials during one of the two meetings, this was in front of the planning commission, but I believe they indicated a certain height range that they would be, it wouldn't be very high above the ground. I just recall that, but I can't recall the specifics on that.
Okay. All right. I think that's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments? I would, I would just say that when I first heard about this zone change, I was taken aback, because I didn't know that natural burials occurred in our county already, and that it was allowed by state law. And so I thought this was some strange thing. I mean, I just thought you had to go through the typical process of American burial with a vault and a casket and all that. So my, my first reaction was, well, I don't think I'm going to support that. But I find out it's not regulated, and that many faith groups are doing it, and so I've kind of reconsidered my position and think I will be supportive. But it did come as a shock to me when I first heard the, heard the detail of it. I don't see any other commissioners wanting to speak. I will move that we take the recommended action, which is approve the conditional use, subject to the conditions recommended by the MAPC, adopt the findings of the MAPC, and authorize chairman to sign a prepared resolution.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item E, a county conditional use request allowing a group resident limited on property zoned rural residential, generally located east of North 143rd Street East on the north side of 45th Street North.
Dale Miller, again, Planning Staff. As she indicated, this is a conditional use request for group residents that would be limited to six women. The facility will provide housing and life skills training for abused and exploited women. The applicant agreed to the eight development standards that are contained in the staff report and recommended by the, the planning commission. The property is zoned, our rural residential, and you can see here, so as is all the land that is surrounding the application area. There's a little parcel of GC over here, the pink. The aerial, you can see there is an existing home and a outbuilding or garage or shed here. There are, there is a home to the west, farm ground to the north, additional farm ground to the east, and there are large lot homes to the south, south of 45th Street. It is within Wichita's growth area, and there are protests equalling 44.65%. I think primarily, the protest is that, in their view, it changes the use of the property from just a single-family home to a more intense use that potentially could attract, or essentially be an attracting nuisance, where someone searching for the women might be there, however, looking for them. The applicant has indicated that, that shouldn't be an issue for the way they run the program in that the women that they accept to this program are, have been screened and are not coming directly from a situation where they're having to leave their residence, or whatever situation they're in, to get away from someone. They've already been, that, that's already happened, and they're already moved on to that, and these folks are, are selected to go through the program to try and enhance their ability to, to move on in life. And I believe the agent is here and can detail their, their program in more detail. But I think that's generally the gist of the, of the protest, that it would negatively impact the potential development of their land if this were to be approved. Here is a site plan that kind of shows the distances from the property line of the existing house, and there is a gated entrance, although the front of the property is not, there is a fence, but it's not, it's just a typical farm fence. The gate is, is more substantial than, than actually the fencing is. And here's another site plan of how the site would be developed. With that, I'd try and answer questions. Planning Commission, like I said, did approve it, subject to those conditions.
All right. Thank you, Dale. Once again, commissioners, we might declare at this time our contact with ex parte communications. I would say that I have been contacted by agent for the applicant and by some of the residents of the area on both sides of the issue, and some of them have changed their position on the issue, so have had that input, but have reserved any opinion on, on what my vote will be until this meeting today. With that, let me call on Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I'd like to state that I have had ex parte contact. I had some emails initially that were in opposition to this. I subsequently received emails from the same individuals saying that they changed their mind after hearing it at the MAPC, and they were supportive of it. But that's the only ex parte contact I've had. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau?
I too have had ex parte communication, the exact same, I think, emails that my fellow commissioner received, arguing both sides of the issue. But I've had no phone calls on, on, on this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo the, the comments to previous speakers. I too also had ex parte communication, simply emails, I think, one phone call. People initially opposed, but then they changed their, their position and encouraged me to support this. And so I don't think I have anybody that did not contact me a second time, that contacted me the first time. So that's all I've got. But basically, probably the same people, I'm guessing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've also had communication with people, both supportive and opposing this particular change on both sides of the issue, and some of them have changed their mind.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions directly for Mr. Miller? If there's not, once again, on a zone change, not a public hearing, but we would allow for public comment if there's anyone who would like to speak. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the county commission, my name is Greg Ferris. I am quote-unquote "the agent" on this case, although I'm doing this because I believe in this project and have volunteered my time to help them through this process. I think that you have correctly identified that initially there was a lot of opposition. We had two neighborhood meetings where we met with different folks, and I think we were able to show them exactly what we were planning, and it wasn't what they originally thought, which was that this was going to be a shelter.
thought, which was that this was going to be a shelter for women. This is not. This is a home, there'll be a family there. We have a very strict screening process that we go through to make sure that those women are ready to integrate themselves back into society. If they are a threat to themselves, to others, there are other groups that help them, and that's not us, that's not the goal of Hope Ranch. I'm not going to take a lot of time, you had a long budget meeting. I did want to make myself available for questions. We have some neighbors, as well as board members here, if you'd like to hear from them. They are willing to come up and tell you how they feel. I don't know if any of the opposition is here. One of them is the large property owner to the north that lives in Oklahoma, and then the property owner directly to the west, also, I think, filed a petition, had some questions on what we were doing. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, make myself available if questions come up later. And also, if you'd like to hear from some of the board members and neighbors, they're available as well.
All right. I don't see anyone asking to speak right now, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anyone have a question of Mr. Ferris specifically? Is there anyone else from the public who wants to speak on this? I don't see anyone asking to speak, so we'll continue with our discussion from the bench, and if there are questions, we'll call someone up to the podium. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I understand correctly, when this went to MAPC, there was perhaps not clarity exactly how this was going to be used, and so the 44.65 percent protest, and perhaps the comments from MAPC, might be different today had this gone out today for notification and for their consideration. But can you please speak to, is this a four-fifths requirement for us to pass this today? And can you please clarify whether this went to MAPC only the one time with that other understanding, and then perhaps if we did it today, it might be different? Can you speculate on that, please?
Well, because of the protest is over 20 percent, it will take four out of five to override that 20 percent protest. I can't speak for the property owner to the west, but it would be my opinion that the property owner to the north, they were at the second hearing. I mean, this was originally scheduled for a hearing. The neighbors asked the applicant to defer the case so that they could have a neighborhood meeting. The applicant agreed to that, but the planning commission, there were comments made, and then they had the second hearing, that was the full-blown hearing. Certainly, the property owner to the north was present and very adamant in their protest. So I don't know that their protest would change, but I can't speak to the one to the west.
All right. All right, well, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I would just say, again, this kind of reminds me of previous discussion today, to the extent that this provides life skills for women who need that kind of help. I think this is a good thing. My only real takeaway is basically on private property rights, if someone has a large home and wants to help out some people, this is really not about rent or long-term living arrangements. This is people, these women, I assume, are going to go in for a short time, get some skills, and then leave. If that's what's going on here, I think this is a tremendously positive facility that's going to do some great things in our community.
Commissioner Howe, you are correct, that's exactly, they may be there up to a year. And we actually only have four women on the site, and if you read the conditions, restrict to only women. There might be towards the end of that year, we might bring one or two extra in to, as a transition, as those original four are transmitted. That's why we asked for six. But normally, there will only be four people there, other than the family that will be residing there. And if I might answer your question, just because I think it's important for you to understand exactly, I don't believe that anything we would have done would have changed the minds of the people to the north or the people to the west. We met with them on several occasions. If we would have had the hearing the first time, and I think you all received some of those notices, we probably would have had, you know, 80 or 90 percent protest. As it was, there was only two people out of the entire area that protested. They own significant property, and that's why it's over 20 percent.
Yeah, I do see that on the map, it's basically two adjacent landowners that constitute the 44 percent. And again, it's interesting that the applicant hears for six, and I guess this is limited to six, under what's being proposed today. Had it been five or less, they wouldn't even have to do this at all. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so again, their plan is to allow this for four, so really, even if we voted no today, they could still execute their plan to provide space for four or even five of these people to live in this home. I guess my takeaway, again, is I'm kind of surprised that we would, you know, if someone has a property, it's really not about a rent situation or whatever, this is someone simply using some space that somebody else happens to own for something good. I guess I'm surprised that we would regulate this to only five unrelated people living in someone's residence. At that point, it's allowed by right, but once you get to six, we have to come in and approve whether that's okay or not. So I think that's why it's before us today. So with my understanding, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we would approve the conditional use, subject to the conditions recommended by MAPC, and adopt the findings of MAPC and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Dale? Commissioners, we have already dealt with item F on the agenda, so I will ask the clerk to call item G.
Item G, discussion of emergency ambulance services agreement.
And Mr. County Counselor, do you have a recommendation here for us?
It's my understanding that the city has delayed their debate of this for, I think, a week, and I would recommend that we pass over this for a week also.
All right, then, we need a motion to defer. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have had contact with folks over across the street, and Brian Fry, and he assures me that they are going to have it on their agenda next Tuesday. So I recommend, and I make a motion, that we defer this for one week.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item H, island annexation request for the city of Hayesville pursuant to the city of Hayesville Resolution Number 1711.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. I'm here for an island annexation requested by the city of Hayesville for property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of 79th Street South and Broadway. I refer you to the map that's in front of you here. The subject property is crosshatched in red there, and it's 11 acres. And the light blue on the map, that shading indicates where the city of Hayesville city limits are. The tannish-colored property is unincorporated area of Sedgwick County. This next map here is zoomed out a little bit, and I'll scroll down a bit here. And again, you can see that the property is crosshatched in red, it's just to the southeast of Hayesville. And an island annexation or state law is defined as an annexation where the land is not adjoining the city's city limits. State statute lays out three requirements that you have to follow in order for an island annexation to be approved. The first is the land has to be located in the same county as the city, here it clearly is. Second, the owner of the property must petition or consent to the annexation. In this case, the property owners have actually petitioned the city of Hayesville to annex their property. And lastly, the Board of County Commissioners, by a two-thirds vote, essentially four of you, of the five of you, would have to find the annexation will not hinder and prevent the proper growth and development of the area, or that of any other city within Sedgwick County. The city of Hayesville submitted this request to the county. We have 30 days after they submitted it to get back, and we received it roughly 26 or seven days ago, I believe. The planning department completed a staff review of this, and that's included in your backup materials. They recommended that you make a finding that the proposed island annexation would not hinder the proper growth and development of the area, nor any other city in Sedgwick County. They noted the property is within the city of Hayesville's 2035 urban growth area within the comprehensive plan. They also noted that it did not infringe on any other city's growth area. Property is currently undeveloped land, it's zoned SF-20. Public works did not suggest the annexation of any roadway to accompany this annexation. The thought process behind that, as I understand it, is to the east of the property, Broadway is maintained by KDOT, and then to the south of the property, 79th Street South, is primarily a county road. It touches Hayesville, and I think goes through it a little further to the west, but primarily, that's unincorporated roadway. If the annexation occurs, the city would provide water, stormwater, sanitary sewer, and police services to the property. If and when public roads would be constructed, those would be the responsibility of the city to construct and maintain as well. The city indicates the services mentioned above could be provided to the property at a reasonable price, as they had a study to look into that. I believe the city has somebody here today who can speak to that, in case you might have any questions. Fire services are currently provided by Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, and because the city of Hayesville is within Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, that would continue if the annexation were approved. The reason the property owners requested this annexation is that they would like to receive the city's services, they believe it would make the property more attractive as an investment property for commercial purposes. They've indicated that they would intend to seek to change the zoning within the city of Hayesville, a limited commercial zoning, again, from the current single-family, large-lot residential zoning. And I refer to the third map on here that shows the type of zoning on the property. Again, the subject property is crosshatched in red. If you look west of Broadway, the majority of the unincorporated area around there is single-family, large-lot residential, whereas the majority of the property to the east of Broadway is actually a rural residential. However, there are some properties near the intersection there. To the south, it's general commercial. To the east of that, there's both limited and general commercial as well. And I believe that's relevant to your analysis as to whether this would have an impact on the development of the area. The vast majority of the parcel is in the floodplain, that question had come up, which doesn't necessarily mean the property cannot be developed, it just means it has to be developed, subject to the, if it were annexed, it'd be the city of Hayesville's floodplain management code, which maybe requires some more expensive modifications or developments or elevations to comply with that. The property owners are Myron and Patricia Hatcher. I believe they are present today, I'm not 100 percent certain on that, but I heard that they were going to be here, in case you had any questions for them, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Richard, Commissioner Ransah?
Thank you. Can you tell me as far as providing water and sewer services, what sort of plans the city has? I mean, are they able to do that at a cost that the owner is willing to do?
I'll tell you what I know, and then I'll see if, does the city have somebody here? Okay. And then I'll defer to them. What I know at this point is that they completed a, they had professional engineering consultants complete a study, that that study indicated that there would not be a required lift station. It's my understanding that they would extend, in extending services, they would probably have special assessments, but I'll let Hayesville represent.
And my concern is, I've supported all island annexations in the past, but we have in the past had one, and I think it was at Cheney, but anyway, which the city ended up not being able to provide some services, and they were talking about a Tiff district and everything, and so I'm trying to make sure that, I mean, we have a good plan here financially.
And I think that's a valid question to ask in terms of the development, because there could be a concern that if there wasn't a plan in place, or if it was cost prohibitive, that the annexation could essentially leave the property, where it'd be more difficult to develop in some way. But I would, if you'd like, I think I would defer to Hayesville.
And is there a prospective use for this? I mean, do we already have a plan on what it's going to be used for?
At this point, they don't have a plan. They're hoping a commercial, as I understand it, they're hoping a commercial investor will come in after the zone changes occurred, and it would be more attractive to them if they are already lined up with city services and able to have the zoning already approved.
Okay.
Did you want to ask the question?
If there's any more information than...
Good morning, Commissioners. Rose Corby, Planning and Zoning Administrator with the city of Hayesville. Yes, we did contract with PEC to give us a cost analysis of the services, water, sewer, erosion protection, site cleaning and restoration. The total cost would be about $542,000. I'm glad you have the map up there, too. In answer to, I'm trying to remember all your questions, so bear with me. In answer to your questions pertaining to how we are able to run services to this area, we do have a lift station. Does this mouse have located? Okay, there we go. We do have a lift station, if you can see the little mouse plus sign right there, located right about there. It is certainly not overworked at this time, and recently, we just plotted, well, last year, we just plotted this whole area, which will be a 68-acre park, to include water services, and so forth and so on. So the reality is that it will be very easy for the city of Hayesville to run the services to this area, and is not requiring to have a lift station or an additional lift station at all at this point in time. Now, if we were to go east of that road, that'd be a different story, but this area is perfectly fine without another lift station.
Okay, but the cost would be over $500,000.
Correct, correct. That's the estimated cost, correct.
Well, what happens if someone buys that and says, I can't afford that, I still want to develop it, and I need water and sewer?
Well, then, they would still have to do the specials, they would still have to include the cost and everything. We would end up putting it in there, but there would have to be like a letter of intent or something of that nature to allow us to put it in there.
Would they have alternatives, for example, onsite, alternative waste systems, or would they have to hook into your water and sewer?
When it gets developed, yes. When it gets developed.
Okay, thank you. But you don't have an intended use now, you don't have anyone who's going to buy land and say, yes, I can afford...
We do not have a buyer, I do not believe, I do not believe they have a buyer at this time. The property owners have stated to me that their goal, their end goal with this, was to make this property more attractive for sale by having it annexed into the city to be able to provide the water and the services for this property, which we can definitely do, but then also to change it, to rezone it to like commercial. Actually, this corner, this section, actually does fit within the 2012 South Broadway corridor plan, and has been designated as a future land use for commercial, so it does fit in that realm of it. So it's definitely a doable situation. It's just a little, it's just an island annexation.
Well, traditionally, I know, these sorts of things, I mean, these things are bought out in the county, they're not in the city, but they're often bought under the condition, like we had here recently, that they will be annexed and all that other stuff, and you'll get the zoning permit. So I'm not sure that that has been a problem in the past. By doing this now, though, you actually do cut yourself off from someone who buys it and who doesn't want to be in the city and wants to be used for additional service, I mean, for something different than that. Okay, well, I just have my concerns based on previous, that, you know, we ended up in a situation where the cost ended up being prohibitive for the city and the user. We don't have a specific user who can sit here and say, yes, I'll pay it.
No, we do not, not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Dennis? Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I guess, maybe a question for Justin, but I understand a service plan has not been developed and is not required for this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Could they do a service plan if they wanted to?
They could. I don't think there's anything by statute says they couldn't do that.
I guess my point is, there may be some questions in terms of streetlights, and fire hydrants, and stormwater, and things like that, that ought to be potentially clarified. I guess Commissioner Ransah's comments means, I guess I see his point, that there's a lot of potential things to work out in the future that, in the absence of a service plan, I guess, is up to the city and the landowners to just work those things out, but I guess we don't really have any idea how that's going to work out necessarily.
And I believe the city may want to comment on that.
Actually, the owner had just stated to me that she has, if the property does not sell, she has every intentions of continuing on with the services for the property. As far as the, I'm sorry, what was your question in regards to fire?
Well, I guess my point is, there may be some things that typically people inside cities like to expect certain services, things like fire hydrants and street lighting, stormwater management, things like that. And to the extent that there's not a service plan, I guess those things are all kind of left up in the air, we don't know exactly what... but I don't know why we would not want to clarify with the service plan exactly what the plan, what the plan is, so that everybody, everybody kind of knows what's, what the city's obligations are.
Okay. The service plan cost estimation does include the fire, fire hydrants, erosion protection, site clearing, restoration, valve assembly, anchored valve assembly. There's a host of things that it includes that would definitely be a part of the service plan when we do get that together.
But the service plan's not part of our consideration today?
No, not right now.
Okay. All right. And I do like the fact that this is not changing our fire district number one revenue stream in any way, whether it's inside or outside, it doesn't make a difference in terms of that revenue. That's just a comment, but it's all my, it's all my questions and comments right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
If there's no other questions on the bench, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
That would be fine.
All right. Well, I approve, or, I knew that we approved the resolution and approved this annexation, and excited to see what the future holds for that particular corner.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, Commissioner Ranzau.
I'm going to be supportive of this as we go forward. My concern is, is that at some point in the future, we don't end up in the spot where we did in another location, and the city and the owner there say, "We can't afford this. Now we need this, the county to subsidize this to a TIF district or something to, to help get that." I'm perfectly fine with what I think the intent is, but that's my, I'm a little gun-shy now, simply because of that one, and that's why I asked these questions, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Justin, would you just answer a question? Our primary decision point is whether or not this will hinder the growth of any other city. Is that correct?
Both any other city or that area.
Okay. And, and, at this point, it doesn't require a service plan?
It does not require a service plan. There is some case law that talks about, it's relevant for you as a decision makers to, to, to ask about what the future use of the property. It's not a requirement, but there's case, there's state case law that talks about that being a relevant factor in your consideration. I know that's been discussed some.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enery?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, thank you. Thank you all from Hayesville for being here. Commissioners, is there any desire for a five-minute break before we continue? Joe, hate to preempt you on calling the next item, but we will, we will be in recess for five minutes. Ready to call our meeting back to order. And Madam Clerk, we'd ask you to call the next item, please.
Item I, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts' regular meeting of July 6, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of last Thursday, July 6th, results in five items that we're presenting to you. Item number one is the Employee Vision Benefits for Human Resources. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Vision Services Plan, option number two, and establish contract pricing at the rates listed above for two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number two is the Employee Flexible Spending Account Administration for Human Resources, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Assurancy Life and Health Insurance Company, and establish contract pricing at the rates listed above for three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is the Cobra Retiree Coverage Continuation Administration by Human Resources. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Taben LLC, and establish contract pricing at the rates listed above for two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number four is the Asbestos Abatement for the Judge Rydell Boys Ranch Facility Project Services. This recommendation is to accept the low quote from Major Abatement and Demolition Incorporated in the amount of $88,500. Please note that the funding of this project is contingent on your approval of the CIP Amendment, which is coming up in the consent agenda. Item number five is the Property Demolition for Judge Rydell Boys Ranch. This recommendation is to accept the bid from H Escavating LLC in the amount of $128,500. And as, as the previous one, want to point out that funding is contingent on the approval of the CIP Amendment and consent agenda. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend approval of these items.
Thank you, Joe. We have a question from Commissioner Ranzau.
Actually, I was going to make a motion that we approve items one, two, and three, and then have a separate discussion on items four and five.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve items one, two, and three of the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enery?
Aye.
And now we have a discussion on items four and five. Commissioner Ranzau, did you want to speak?
Well, I'll just say that I have concerns about this. I know there was an article in the paper yesterday about, we got some news from, from the state that they felt like JRBR should not be included in the encumbrance for the grant program, and we thought we had that taken care of, but since then, evidently, someone in Washington DC said, "Hold on a minute, let's take a closer look at this." So, they may or may not approve that. That being said, I would, you know, there's multiple options that we can do here. This option here today is being forced because, because of the federal grant program, in which we took $7,100 50 years ago. If, if it continues the way it is, they're going to force us to tear it down, but there's a possibility that that encumbrance could be released and then allow us to explore all options. That might be to sell it, that might be to lease it, that might be to repurpose it for our own uses, it might be to tear it down. Ultimately, I think that decision, though, should be in the hands of the local government and not Washington DC. And so, I would like, I'm not ready to proceed just yet. I think we should hold off, but I'm not sure what other Commissioners think, so, I'll leave it for there, there for now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, the bid that we received on item sworn five, is there a, a time for us to consider that bid? 30 days or 60 days for us to, to accept that?
Generally, on bids, we have 60 days to act on it, or, this particular one, the asbestos abatement is part of a state contract, so it's not necessarily a limit, as opposed to it being a bid. So, there's more leniency, I think, on the abatement.
And what about item five?
Item five would be the actual bid, which would be the 60 days.
60 days? Do we know what that date would be?
Generally, I think it's from the time of the bid opening. Remember what the bid opening date was?
May 2nd?
Right. Which one?
It was May 2nd.
May 2nd, okay.
So, we've, Commissioner Mike Scholes, County Manager, it was, we've passed the date, but it was extended 30 days, so we have an additional, it was 60 days from May 2nd, which we have passed. And then, Tanya, yesterday, from Facilities, asked for another 30 days from the vendor, and they agreed to that. So, we have a couple more weeks to, to work it out.
All right, well, I thank you for that information. I guess I, I feel uncomfortable supporting the, supporting the proposal to demolish these buildings at this point, because, I guess it's my opinion, these have a lot of value to certain organizations in the community, and, and to the extent that we have been, we've not had clarity regarding our encumbrance. It has been very confusing for ourselves, our staff, as well as the community. And we had just, we had, we had two different positions on that just yesterday alone, and I think it's still up in the air. We don't know where this is going to end up. I really think that for us to make a decision based on, on information that's not clearly defined would be, would be unwise. We have some time to let that dust settle a little bit, see where the federal government ends up, take this up at a later date. I would like to, I guess, ask my colleagues to, let's just, I would like to see us push this off indefinitely. Let's look at the dates and see what happens with the federal government. We have at least another week. We could very easily push this off a week, maybe longer, at least, I think, potentially till our, our budget adoption, August, and I think it's August the 2nd. So, I would like to make a motion that we would, we would table this item for now and bring it up at an appropriate time.
Commissioner Ranzau?
I'll second that motion. I also want to state, talk to Congressman Estes. Evidently, there's a bill being written right now for, for someone in Virginia who's having close to the same problem with the exact same program, and so there's a potential of piggybacking on that with legislation that would help with JR specifically. I'd like to give that time to materialize beyond that, regardless of what happens to JRBR. There's also, I've also spoken through the Congressional Delegation about legislative changes to the program itself that would allow any entity that's taking money from this program to increase their flexibility. We have several issues with this particular program, not just at JRBR, so, in fact, the whole Lake Afton entity is encumbered, and some other, we have 640-some acres in the northeast of the county. It's just been a long, long path to where we got here today, so we'd like some legislative relief. And so, that's kind of, I just want to get that on the record, and people know that there are people trying to, trying to work this issue, and that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Ranzau that we need to do something with these encumbrances we have, not just on this property, but other properties that we own right now. So, I do appreciate his efforts in that, and I hope we continue to work towards those. I do disagree with him on one subject, that we're forced by that federal grant to, into the decision on whether or not to demolish the JRBR, and I don't agree that all options... decision on whether or not to demolish the JRBR, and I don't agree that all options, this is the only option that's being forced by the encumbrance. Really, the cost to repair this facility, to bring it up to speed with ADA compliance and so forth, is, I've heard numbers from $1 million to $2 million to $5 million. We have to have grant access through the facility that we already have now through Lake Afton for anyone to get access to this facility. There are very, very nice homes that are located just east of this location. We don't have any bidders right now that want this property. I've heard people talk about what great bones that this property has. Fact is, it might have great bones, the problem is, the body is shot. So, it doesn't matter how good that the bones are, I've toured it, I went out there specifically to make sure that I saw what we were voting on. I walked through this entire facility. I appreciate the history behind this, and I appreciate what happened in the past, but the past is the past, it's not going to be the future. We know that we are not receiving funding to go back to JRBR as it was in the past. So, I do appreciate the fact that we've got a speaker here that was very passionate about what happened with JRBR in the past. The fact is, without adequate funding from the state, it's not going to be the future. The future is something completely different. Lake Afton is in my district, and it is a beautiful park out there, and that's what we need to look at for the future of this facility when we are taking a look at the future, is what should we do with it? And what we should do with it is use it as a park. So, I won't be supporting the motion that's on the table at the present time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am okay with deferring this for a while, tabling it. One thing that I am concerned about is the proposed company, H. Escavating, it's $90,000 less than the second, and up to $400,000 less than some of our other people. If we allow these all to expire and we go out, I'm afraid that the next bids are going to be closer to the $218,000 range, if not higher, now that everybody knows. So, I am concerned that we're going to be in the same position. So, I need clarification on what is absolutely the last day that this bid from H. Escavating is valid.
What we can do, Commissioner, is check with that company and see if they're willing to extend that. At this time, I couldn't tell you until we had that conversation. But we can get that information and give back to all of you Commissioners, if that's what you...
Joe, I'd like Tanya to speak. She's had, I guess, recent conversations with the vendor.
Okay.
Morning, Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Project Services Program Manager. I spoke to Kim Evans yesterday with purchasing, and she has been in contact with the vendor, this low bidder. What I understand right now is that they are currently on a job, and so they are able to postpone this a little bit. I don't know that we have an exact date from this vendor, but we do understand that they're willing to hold that bid for a little bit longer for us. Is that accurate, Kim? Kim's saying that she can get an exact date from this vendor, on how long they'll hold the bid.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Eric Jones, County Counselor. I understand that the 60 days and the 90 days is part of our rules. We would probably reach out and try to get extended, because August 2nd, which is that first meeting in August, would actually be 92 days out from the opening of the bid. So, I would like to maybe get a four- or five-day extension, just to be safe, and we'll reach out and do that, and if we're unable to do that, maybe we'll bring it to your attention.
Mr. Chair, all right. So, a clarification is, as it presently stands, it appears that the extension presently goes to the 2nd of August.
Right.
If we can get one. Otherwise, we can put this on the agenda for next Wednesday again, because that would be the...
We've already gotten an extension of 30 days on top of the original 60. The problem is that August 2nd is 92 days out.
Right.
And so, so yes...
But we could still handle this in a July meeting.
So, if we're unable to get that extension between now and next Wednesday, then we would do that. We would do what you suggested, which is put it on next week.
However, the motion is an indefinite deferral. So, that's what we'd be voting on right now, is an indefinite deferral.
Well, that's a decision for the Commission.
Correct. But I mean, I just want to clarify that.
As long as you don't understand that the carriage turns into a pumpkin...
I understand.
...31st.
I would like to have this deferral be until August 2nd, if possible, because I think that gives us time to get back in touch with the National Park Service and the state on these questions.
If that's the motion that passes eventually, then we will reach out to the vendor and try to get an extension to August 2nd.
Thank you.
So, Commissioners, if I may, we, at this time, do not have an exact date, but we will be glad to get whatever date you're willing to offer. Sounds like the vendor is willing to work with us on whatever date we hopefully need. So, if you can give me direction, if not, we'll go for the standard 30 or longer.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, Joe. However, with our schedule, what might be circumstances that would allow Commissioners peace of mind on a vote between now and August 2nd? If they don't extend to August 2nd, then we would have to handle this under current situation next week. What might change between now and next week? What new information might we get that would change the opinion of the Commission as to whether or not to raise the building? We are all in favor of having the federal government lift their restrictions on the use of the property. We fundamentally have to decide, are we going to raise that property that by all estimations is not suitable currently for use? We have to deal with the policy decision. Do we want this to be park ground, or do we want to try to hope someone might come along and rehab that facility and use it for some purpose? And most of the information I've gotten from staff and other folks is that the cost of doing that is almost prohibitive. So, I think we have to get back to the point that, yes, we want to go ahead and try to relieve those restrictions by the federal government, but today, our decision is, are we going to try to turn that ground back to park ground, or are we going to try to get someone else to come in and use it? We have tried for two years to get someone to come in and use it. We've put RFPs out two or three times, we've talked to people, and there is no one presently who wants to use the property for a variety of reasons. We own the property, it's part of the Lake Afton park ground, and we do not have a use for that building. One reason is because it costs too much to rehabilitate it, to reestablish it for legitimate use. So, we've got several balls in the air, but I'm not sure that they're all consistent with one another. The grant thing, we're all in agreement that we want to remove the restrictions from the grant. The bid date is an issue. It may be that we have to do this next week. Is that going to change our mind, or whether or not we want to turn it back to park ground, or whether we want to use it for some other use? We don't have a use for it, there's been no discussion that we would use the building. The potential user, I don't know if anyone else has talked to the last person who showed, or last entity that showed a real strong interest in the property, but I talked to that person last night, and they say, "We're not making a U-turn. We tried, didn't work, we've gone another direction, and we're committed to that direction." So, we don't have anyone who could use it. The condition of the property makes it, I'm repeating myself now, not where we want to rehab it. So, we get right back down to the policy issue. We want a park ground, or do we want someone else to use it, which we don't see anybody? Do we want to use it, which we have no plans, and we don't want to invest in it? It's not a hard decision for me to make, and I'm ready to vote today that we raise the property, turn it back to park ground. So, I won't support the motion before us, and I would remind Commissioners that the motion before us is for an indefinite delay, and that just says, okay, we're going to keep that salvage property out there and continue to maintain it indefinitely and not turn it into a park ground. So, if someone said, "Okay, let's defer for one week," that's not going to hurt anything, I can wait a week, but I don't want to defer any longer than that. So, that's my comments and position on it. Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, I just want to make a few comments. First of all, I think the condition of the building and renovation costs are being greatly exaggerated. Let's be honest, if we had not shut down JRBR to begin with, we'd still be out there operating it, okay? We have had, in the past, had interest from people who wanted to use this, and one particular entity had $1 million they were really willing to invest, and they wanted it. But when this encumbrance came up, that just shut everything down. So, I'm sure there's nobody that wants it right now, but if we could get that encumbrance lifted, then we could have a discussion now and say, "All right, now we have free rein, we can do whatever we want." Maybe more people will show up who want the facility, and maybe they won't. I don't think we really know at this time because of what has happened with this encumbrance, okay? But I can assure you that it would still be open and operating just fine if we not shut it down, and I don't support the notion that it's going to cost $2 to $5 million to renovate, and like I say, we have had people who are willing to, nevertheless, absorb the cost of renovation, and so I think we should keep those options open, because I continue to say that it's that encumbrance that shut this everything down, because there's no hope, so...
I'd be willing, I mean, if we want to amend the motion to a specific date, that's fine. I think we could also just talk about it in staff meeting later on, and then make a decision, put it back on, however we want to do it. Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify what indefinite means to me in this discussion, we don't know when we're going to get clarity from the state or the federal government. Again, we've seen two positions just in the last 24 hours. We don't know what the date that the vendor is willing to extend this out to. I would think it'd be reasonable for us to ask for 30 days, if they're willing to accept that, that we can pick a date 30 days out, and to me, that'd be very reasonable to give the time for the state and federal government to work out the differences and give us some clarity. To the extent that we cannot get an extension, or to the extent that we find out from the federal or state government where our position is, at that point, we should put this back on the calendar. So, again, since we don't know some of things, I guess I would let the staff and Commissioners be involved in this discussion, and at some point, when those things are known, then we can find a date on the calendar to address this issue. But indefinite just simply means we don't, even if I was to pick August the 2nd, for example, it very well might be that the vendor's willing to go out 30 days, and we might find out in 20 days the position of the state or federal government. So, I hate to be arbitrary and just pick a date that may or may not serve our needs. I would ask the vendor for some grace and allow the state and federal government to work this out, and that would become apparent to us. When we hit one of those two points, then it'll force us to go back on the agenda, at which point, we'll deal with it. So, I think the word indefinite, to me, is a very good word. It doesn't mean we're not going to deal with it, it means we'll bring it back up at an appropriate time. That is what I did say during my motion. Let me also just address a couple of things. You know, this $2 to $5, $1 to $5 million repair, that is assuming some things. For example, there's some people saying that the roof needs to be replaced, or the boiler needs to be replaced, and it's very expensive. I think the actual urgent needs for someone to use that building would be, excuse me, the sewer line. I don't think it's, I think it's like $100,000 or less to replace the sewer line out to the lagoon. The roof potentially could be repaired and extended. The boiler, I think, has been certified as of recently. We don't have any reason to say it has to be replaced right now, that might be something that has to be done in the next 10 years, we just don't know. With respect to ADA, again, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stoltz is in our staff here, is attending our meeting today perhaps, he can speak to this, but in terms of ADA, if a nonprofit takes over this facility, I don't think they have the same requirements that we have. I see Chris also laboring in the back of the room. So, in terms of ADA requirements, you know, what is exactly necessary in this building to make it compliant with ADA? I think that all depends on what is being done with the building and who it is that might be using the building, but we don't know that yet either. So, I hate to see that as a reason to bulldoze a perfectly potentially good building. Again, this is a multimillion-dollar facility that's owned by taxpayers in terms of access. I think there's a potential way that they could access this property from the west or from the southeast. Again, Lake Afton is open 24/7. If somebody wanted to operate this facility that's providing some great services to our community, to help people that have significant needs, let's just talk about homeless men for a second. One of the interested parties in this was talking about providing substance abuse treatment and job training for homeless men in our community. Imagine if that was to happen, how great that would be. So, I just think that we have to have a vision for this. Again, this was a Sedgwick County investment on the front end. We spent a lot of time and money setting this up. It's taxpayer-owned, and to bulldoze that building because we don't know about ADA, or because we don't know about the boiler, or we don't have time to wait for the state or federal government to weigh in, to me, is just not good government. We need to slow this down a little bit. And then with respect to the nice homes, I appreciate that, there are nice homes around there, but again, this facility's been treating medium-to-high-risk criminal, criminogenic youth since 1959, and these are, we're talking about potentially, for example, in my example of homeless men, these are not necessarily criminal men, they just might, they have needs, and they might need to be reunited with their families and have some substance abuse treatments and job training. So, it is not necessarily going to change the value of these homes when they purchased and they purchased property and built homes next to a facility that was treating up to 50 medium-to-high-risk criminal youth. And so, to me, this is, that's not a major argument either. All I'm asking for is for a little delay. Let the state and federal government work this out. We don't have clarity today. These bids can be potentially put off. Let's allow ourselves to get clarity in terms of what the state or federal government's going to allow us to do, and should this be unencumbered by them, then we have a different discussion potentially. And I have to agree with Commissioner Ranzau, we've discouraged our interested parties because we have messed around for so long on this deal that the two I'm aware of have kind of moved on, but it doesn't mean that we won't find other interested parties. Should we find this, a way to unencumber this, we might find other organizations that would be interested in stepping in to help. So, we've got to get clarity on these things, and it's reasonable for us to take a little bit of time to let that happen. That's my comments. I hope that my clarity on my motion makes sense and is agreeable to my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I understand what Commissioner Howell is asking. I support deferring it, but I also recognize that if we go out for bid again, we're not going to have a bid as low as the vendor that was selected. So, in effort to not lose that, if Commissioner Howell would be willing to amend his motion, or I could amend the motion to August 2nd, that gives us three weeks to talk to any provider in the past that may have been interested in it. We can solicit more activity, see if anybody, if any of these new developments change anybody's mind. If not, then on August 2nd, I would be comfortable at that point, moving forward. I'd prefer not to tear down the facility, I'd prefer to give it to a nonprofit, to have them use it and serve that population, but if we don't find anybody, I think that's the only option. So, if Commissioner Howell's amenable to that, or I can do it myself, but August 2nd is my position.
Thank you, Commissioner. That suggestion, though, would be contingent on the fact that bidder accepting in August. From the inference we got from information is that they're about to complete another project, and then they want to get started on this bid, which may or may not be August 2nd. So, we'd have to find that out for sure.
Yes, sir.
If August 2nd doesn't work, then we need to, then we need to deal with this sooner, or else we have to go out for bid again. I would want to make a comment that this is not something that just cropped up overnight. We've been talking about what to do with this building since we stopped the juvenile detention activity out there for a couple of years. So, we've had plenty of time to look at it, analyze it, we've had our staff look at it and others look at it, and the conclusion of people who are expert in this field say that it is, that you're going to spend anywhere from $2 million, and an old, old number was up to $8 million, to refurbish it and make it usable if you meet all the ADA compliance issues that we're required to do. So, I... So I didn't want anyone to get the impression that, well, we haven't been doing our homework, we haven't been looking at it, we've been doing bad government, we've been doing things logically decently and in order, in order to come to the recommendation that this building needs to be raised. I, well, let me, let me stop there. Commissioner Howell wants to speak, so Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. And again, I remember that $8 million number, and I guess I asked staff a long time ago, what exactly do you get for $8 million? And I think the answer was a new facility. Again, $8 million is a lot of money. We potentially could build a brand-new facility for that or less to do these types of services. Now, I don't, I don't see that as being a legitimate estimate to refurbish a building that's like this. But nevertheless, if Commissioner Renzo has heard the comments from Commissioner O'Donnell is willing to accept a tweak to my motion to change this to August 2nd, I would make that, I would make that change.
I'll support that.
All right. Commissioner, thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion if it's acceptable to table this until August the 2nd. That is pending the agreement from the vendor that they're willing to accept a small delay in our contract acceptance. And if they're not, then we'd have to put this on next week. But my motion is to put this back to August the 2nd.
Okay. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Renzo that this be deferred to August 2nd if that's workable, and if not, we put it on our agenda next week. Is that correct? Commissioner Howell?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I don't know why this excavating company would consider even giving us any kind of leeway on the 30 days or 60 days or whatever. And because all they got to do is look at our agenda for today, and they find out that they bid $128,000, and the next bidder will bid $218,000, the next one $479,000, they're leaving a lot of money on the table. So if I was them, I sure don't want to give them any ideas, but if I was them, I'd say, no way, rebid this thing, because I know I'm going to get more money. So I think that the extension is probably not well thought out. I think that that's probably a mistake for us. Second of all, Commissioner Renzo mentioned that this encumbrance that we've got is preventing us from trying to sell it. In reality, some RFPs were put out well before we even knew we had an encumbrance. And we didn't get it sold when we even didn't know we had an encumbrance. We just learned about this encumbrance since I've been on the commission. We had an attorney that did a lot of great research, and she came up with the fact that there's an encumbrance on it. That was never in the picture up until just recently. So to hang our hat to say that that's causing all of our problems, I think, is an error. What's causing all of our problems is we've got a facility that's been sitting out there vacant for a number of years. It's not going to be used for the Judge Riddell Boys Ranch in the future. If we happen to be able to sell it, who are we going to sell it to? We don't know what's going to happen. We don't know who might buy that. It is great parkland, but once we sell it, we lose control. They could, once the bloom goes off the rose and they find out it really does cost them millions of dollars to rehab this facility, all the stars go out of their eyes and they see reality. Who are they going to sell it to then? And what's going to happen with this piece of facility? Because we lose control the minute that we sell it to someone else, even though we've got every bit of compassion in our heart to try and get it to some charitable organization. Once the charitable organization finds out that it is damaging their charity at that point in time, and they decide to sell it, we don't know who it's going to end up with. In addition, we've got a piece of property that's actually to the west of this, that this kind of cuts off a little bit. You can still get to it, but difficultly. So it would impact that if it got sold to someone else. So I am very worried about any kind of extension at this point in time. I understand what the amended motion is. I still will not be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for, just again, for clarity on my motion. If the vendor's not willing to extend it to August the 2nd, we have the chance from now until Friday to put this on the agenda for next week. And I think that's, again, to be clear, that's part of my, part of my motion. If the vendor's not willing to extend it to August the 2nd, then it goes on the agenda next week. And again, there's no way that they would be able to back out of their offer and think there's going to be a better, a better deal to them, because again, we'll either deal with it next week or August the 2nd. And in either case, next week, that'd be the low bid. And if they want to give us a couple of extra days, it'd be August the 2nd, this'll be the low bid. But they're not going to be able to increase their bid, because if they're not willing to accept, you know, extend the contract, then, then we'll just do it next week. So again, I don't think this, this changes the contract opportunity for us in either way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. The only thing that might change between now and what, next week, is if the federal government moves rapidly and gives us a decision on whether or not that piece of ground is exempt from the restrictions. I'm not holding my breath that we get that, that we get that determination. If we get that determination, the question still remains, does the majority of the commission want to turn this into park ground? Or do we want to sell the property to someone else who presently, we have tried for years to get bidders, and the only two people interested are no longer interested? So it doesn't make sense to me to defer. I mean, the decision is the same decision. One week does not make a difference. And so I appreciate all the comments that are made, but we own the ground, it's part of the park, we ought to restore it where it can be used as park ground. Folks who are in the nonprofit business have multiple opportunities around this community and this area to purchase equipment to further their mission. This is not the only thing there. We're not denying any nonprofit the opportunity to carry out their mission. I just, it just doesn't make sense to me to take what probably is going to be a one-week delay on a decision that won't change. So I won't be able to support it. Commissioner Dennis?
Commissioner Enry made a number of the comments that I was going to make. I don't see what's going to change in the next week or 15 days at all. This has been going on for several years. Several RFPs have been put out. If a charity was very interested in it, it's been in the newspaper, it's been on the radio. I don't see a single one of those individuals in the audience right now saying, we're here, we want the piece of property. I still support that being a park ground. It's a great park. It's in my district. I sincerely hope that we are able to do something to return that park ground. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak. We have a motion on the table that includes language that says we want to defer to August 2nd if possible. If not possible, deal with this issue again next week. I mean, that's a shorthand way of saying. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, does this include item four and five, or just four?
Thank you. Good question. I believe this probably means item four and five.
Yes.
This is the same company doing both asbestos?
No, sir. There's a different asbestos abatement company as opposed to the demolition company.
So we have to have this leeway given to us by two companies then?
Correct. Well, not, well, excuse me, the asbestos company is part of a state contract, and like I said, there's more flexibility there. And it's based on whether we, we go forward with the demolition, that they'll actually do the abatement. But I believe we have more flexibility with the abatement company than we do with the demolition.
Okay. So this, however, the deferral does apply to both items four and five.
Thank you, sir.
Is everyone?
That's correct.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Renzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
No. All right. The motion carries, and this is, we'll take action to follow what was approved here, whatever that was.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next item.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend your approved consent agenda items Juliet through Sierra, with the exception of Kilo, that the counts, the public works would like to defer.
Okay.
So Kilo is deferred. The rest of Juliet through Sierra, recommend that you approve.
All right. Thank you. We have a couple of commissioners wishing to speak. Commissioner Renzo?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of items N and R, and that we defer item K at the request of staff.
And your two exceptions were?
N, November and Romeo.
November and Romeo.
One relates to the Boys Ranch, and the other two EMS. I don't want to have further discussion on.
Okay. We, we have a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and that is defer the consent agenda with the exception of K, N, and R.
Yes. Well, and to defer item K, specifically to defer item K as directed by, or suggested by staff.
Okay. Is any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Just a minute. I do have a question.
Excuse me. Commissioner Dennis?
If we defer item R, will that then automatically come up next?
Well, I was going to address N and R separately, make the separate motion. And I was going to make a motion to bring it up whenever we bring up the other stuff. I mean, it should be the same day, right?
Correct. Correct. R is tied to items four and five on the bid board. So that'll come back on August 2nd.
Okay. All right. I think we understand. So any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enry, or O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Chairman Enry?
Aye. So.
So do I need to make a motion to defer item R?
Item K in the motion is already deferred.
Yes.
Is that correct? All right. And then, yeah, a motion to defer item R in harmony with the other would be appropriate.
A sub move.
A second.
Defer item R and bring it up whenever we bring up the other two issues that we deferred with respect to JRBR.
We have a motion, and we had a second. Is there any discussion on item R? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Now she called you.
No.
Commissioner Renzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. And now, Commissioner Renzo, you want to talk about item N.
Yeah, I have some questions for Scott on this data agreement between Sedgwick County EMS and Kansas Board of. Can you tell me, we're going to share data with who?
We're going to share data with the Kansas Board of EMS and for the Kansas Emergency Medical Service Information System, which other entities participate in. And I can get Justin Wagner to clarify the Kansas statute, where we're statutorily bound right now, to provide them data. This agreement helps us further define and protect the county on what data we will provide them, what they can use it for. And also, in your packet is a report that outlines what that data will be published at to share with other entities in their community to benchmark and do research.
Okay. Are we providing data to them now?
We are, in a limited function, yes. As part of our state permit, we provide them data, call volume, number of trauma calls, number of medical calls. This is in line. It's a little bit more in detail what we'll be providing them in a data set that standardizes that other entities in the state of Kansas and the nation compare data and share.
Okay. It, so what are we providing data in accordance with the statute? And I'm looking at this, and, okay, first of all, will, will the patients provide any consent to their data being shared?
The patient's name, social security, anything that identifies.
Okay, that's not what I asked. Will the patient, they will not?
No.
And we're going to participate in this chemist, this isn't mandatory, though.
I'll let Justin Wagner address the statutory requirement, what may be required of us to provide them. I believe we are, we shall provide them information that we're currently not doing.
Okay, I understand. But I'm asking you, are we required to participate in the chemist, Kansas?
We're not required to do that.
We are not required to. This, this will, we will participate then.
Correct.
We'll also be, there'll be a vendor, a third-party vendor will get access to this data and shall share it with a national.
Correct. That image trend which the state of Kansas has contracted with to collect this data.
So we're going beyond, from what I can read, we're going beyond what's required in the statute. We're giving it to a third party without patient consent, and also giving it to a national entity for whatever use they want to use. Not sure why we want it.
Correct. Well, it's good for research and data. It helps us look at other entities, what they're doing. It's asking for how many trauma calls, how many medical calls, how many pediatric, how many adult, how many chest pain calls do you run? Falls, those things of that nature, which is de-identifying. It doesn't identify a patient.
I understand. But we're giving it to somebody we don't even know, to national databases, you know, for, if we want to look at other entities, we can, we can ask them for their data if they'll give it to us. We're just, I think we're going beyond what we're supposed to. I'm a little skeptical of making decisions for people's health care data without their consent. I know there's a lot of that going on and being pushed by the federal government, and I just, I have, we're already doing our reporting, and I just have some problems with that. I mean, it is voluntary. It says right here that it's voluntary. Says in the contract it's voluntary.
But I still recommend that we do it. We're the largest EMS service in the state. It will help us look and share data. What we're doing, we'll compare that to others at the local and national level, which helps us conduct research. There may be benefits to us, as in treatment modalities and other things that come out of this. And we're still protecting people's private health information. They have to follow all the health insurance.
No, I don't believe we are. We're sharing it with people that they didn't give consent.
We're not sharing personal data with them that would identify them in any way, and that must be followed. And that's what this agreement helps us protect, that data.
Nevertheless, we're sharing their data.
Yes.
And that could, that could change. I've seen, I've seen the thing, the spreadsheet, it says what we're going to give.
Correct.
But it also says that, concerned here, it says that KBMS will, that they're doing this in accordance with HIPAA.
Correct.
Which is the federal government's way to take over control of our health care data.
Helps us protect, but there are certain elements of that that we cannot share private health information. It helps protect the patient under the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act.
Let's be clear, from my perspective, it does not. HIPAA is a federal law that takes away the decision-making process with respect to your data. It takes it away from the patient and gives it to the federal government. The federal government then determines when your health data can be shared and who can get it. For example, they think they should get it, and anybody they work with, okay? HIPAA takes the decision-making process away from the patient and gives it to the federal government. It's sold as patient protection, because it says, oh, yeah, can't do this, can't do that, except for all the other entities that they deem necessary is able to get it. They can get it without patients even knowing. They can get it without patients even knowing. So that's... You've got to be careful with how the federal government sells things. I'm not sure how, why they think they get to interject themselves into my healthcare data and determine who gets and who doesn't. I think that should be up to the patient. But I just have some concerns here. We're going above and beyond what's required by the statute without patient consent. I'm very sensitive to that because there's a lot of that going on with respect to the electronic healthcare data. Identifiable information is being collected in that regard. And I think this has the potential to do so at some point in the future. So I have some concerns. And I understand what your rationale, I'm not sure it'll provide us any benefit that we couldn't get through other ways. So those are my concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Dennis?
Real quickly, is any patient identifiable information provided?
It's all of the data set, but it's de-identified. It's like I gave the copy of the report. This is what the report will look like when it comes out with our data included in it along with everybody else's. So it is de-identified, it is protected. This agreement helps us further protect that information. It's our data. They don't own it, they can't use it for other things and share that information beyond what's in this report.
But real short answer now, okay? Not the long answer.
Yes. They get the data in the data set. It's produced, it's like we have it in our electronic patient care reporting system.
If I fell over this afternoon and, well, Commissioner Ranzau was necessitating me and you came and picked me up, would they know it was David Dennis that was picked up?
No.
Thank you.
Now, hold on. You said the data's in the data set. Who de-identifies it?
The Image Trend software de-identifies that data.
So they are getting patient identifiable data. They take it out. So it's in their, they're getting the identifiable data.
Correct.
This is how electronic medical record works. The data is there.
Correct.
Subject to being hacked or misused or abused, okay? So we are giving them identifiable data. They are obligated to de-identify it.
Correct.
Nevertheless, we are giving their data, identifiable data, to a third party and other entities, subject, they could be hacked, they could be used and abused inappropriately. And we're doing this without patient consent because the federal government says we can. That is what's happening. And I have a problem with that.
Commissioner Dennis?
Let me go back because I'm still not clear. I think you're telling me one thing and you're telling Commissioner Ranzau something different, aren't you? Is my name or my social security number being given out if I ride in one of your ambulances?
It is in the data set that we collect in our patient care report. In the table that's attached to that, all that information is in the table. And when it is sent, it is de-identified by the Image Trend software. So it is not published and it's protected.
Is it de... Is the identification taken out by us or by them?
By them.
By them?
Yes.
And we can't do that?
We have the option to do that, yes. We don't have to include that field in the data set.
Okay. So why can't we just amend this motion to say that we remove all identifiable material and provide them the rest?
And I think that language is specified, I believe, in the agreement. Is that correct, Justin? I'll let him address that.
Give me just a second here, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Dennis, what the agreement provides is that the data would be de-identified by KBEMS. Under HIPAA, just to kind of explain this, the background here, because HIPAA says that there's protected health information, and generally you can't disclose that. However, in this case, if there's a state statute, which this is a state statute that says we shall provide this to the State Board of EMS, then that will trump the requirement of HIPAA, but you still will want to require it to be de-identified. That de-identification requirement is in the contract, and they would be required to de-identify it subject to the HIPAA de-identification standards. So...
But we can't de-identify it before we send it?
I think we could before we send it. I mean, that would be a matter, I mean, we would probably want to amend the contract to state that if we were de-identifying it on our end. I don't know what that would be like in terms of a staff, you know, how much work that would be. And I think Scott might be better able to answer that.
Is that just a field that you have to delete?
Yes. Yes, Scott Hattigan, yes. It's a field in the table you could just delete, not include the data.
Would that satisfy your concerns, Chairman, Commissioner Ranzau?
Well, it's a step in the right direction. I also don't want to share with some national entity that we don't know about. So with those two options taken care of, I would be, I would reluctantly support that, even though I don't think the sharing of medical data with or without identifying data should be done without patient consent. Nevertheless, that's my other issue, too, so. So perhaps, I mean, is this time urgent?
No. Given the contract, the way it states, we could just do it on our end. I don't know that we need to amend it, talking to Justin. We could just de-identify it on the front end and be...
I would prefer to make, get to have some discussion about modifying this contractually so that it's in writing.
Correct.
But what I'm saying is, I mean, there's no, I mean, we're not up against the deadline.
No, sir.
I know we've deferred a lot of things, but...
Long meeting, not much.
But this, this is just, I mean, it's up to the rest, Commissioner. I'd like to defer this and have some other discussions, but that's up to the...
And Commissioner Ranzau, consistent with your thoughts, and I mean, ultimately we could defer it. I don't believe it is time sensitive on the state's end. I think we had approved this on our end as staffing when, you know, I think back in like October of last year. It took a while for the state, I think, to work through some of this stuff. But the, and maybe I'm wrong on that, some of that Scott could clarify, but the thing we could modify in the agreement is we could say that the Sedgwick County staff will de-identify the data to HIPAA standards on our end. That's also an option. Under HIPAA, either one of those would be permissible.
Yeah, we could work out the language on that, but I prefer not to do that on the fly. I mean, wouldn't that be best practice, probably?
I think that's your call.
Well, my motion would be to defer this and continue to work with staff until we get satisfactory language clarified.
Can we have a motion in a second? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as I'm sitting here, listening to this, I appreciate the comments because I think I came in here prepared to support this, but I think I'd like to take a little bit of time to clean up the contract a little bit. And I think it's, I'd be glad to support it down the road, I think, once that's done. But a couple of questions. How much time does it cost us in terms of, yeah, and I see seven pages of very small print in the back of this that talks about different kinds of things we're collecting? Are we collecting that information regardless whether we do this or not? Are we collecting that data anyway?
Yeah, we have the data anyway. It's an export field we export into the table. The data's there. So it's not a lot of laborious work to create that document.
So the report that's ultimately done, I guess, at the national level, do we have access to that currently? Do we already look at that?
There are national, we look at the Kansas one right now, the national one, the national information system is up and running. More and more people are contributing, like this group will contribute our data to the national system that we can look at nationally, what are benchmarks, what are best practices, what are others doing, what are trends in certain areas that we may not know today. So there are some benefits that we can have in additional research that can be done and conducted if we're looking at common things, common tables, common elements within an electronic patient care report that's de-identified.
Are you using that data right now to do some analysis regarding our population or our services?
We are starting to look at some of the data, like in the KMS report that's published, to go through there and look at that. What are other agencies seeing that currently in those common data fields? And that's the whole part of the project. It's commonality and reporting on common information across our system and not, we have common terms, we're looking at the same things, and one system's not calling it one thing and another system's looking at something else. So it's been very helpful in that regard.
As I look at the data that's being collected back here, I guess I don't, I don't really see there's any really defined, like benchmarks or goals that we would, I mean, a lot of these things are basically, the activities are done by the paramedics to the people that they're providing services to. And again, I don't know that we could, in any way, change what we, what services we provide because this depends on what the situation is. We're going to provide whatever's necessary. So I guess I'm not quite sure how this is useful to us.
Well, it helps us do, look at things on chest pain calls or trauma calls and falls to see if there's commonality within separate economic groups, age groups, zip codes that would help us look and maybe target specific things. If we knew we had a high population of folks getting specific types of injuries or illnesses in a specific area that we may not know today.
Let me ask you then. So with the de-identified data, can we, as the Board of Health, access this data and find out what's going on in our districts or our communities?
Certainly be shared with them in this report and look at it and see if there's trends out there in a certain, specific population or a certain area of town. And that's the benefit of having this data across the state and across the nation. There may be pockets of things occurring in one area and not in another.
How dynamic is this data in terms of, if we wanted to go look at the latest and greatest data that's been collected, what would that be? How recent?
The 2016 report is a synopsis and a snapshot of what happened in 2016 for those participating entities in the state of Kansas.
But that's the report from the state or the federal government. What about the data we provide to them? Are we able to access that even, whatever's being submitted to the state? Are we able to see that data in a raw format?
The data that we submit every year, yeah. Call volume, those types of things that's submitted, we look at that, yes. But we don't know necessarily what others are doing. And that's what Image Trend, the Kansas Board of EMS, and the KMS and NMS projects are helping us do.
I feel like I'm getting conflicting information from our health department versus what you're telling me because, again, I'm interested in the infant mortality data specifically, but I've been told by them that I'm not going to get that data. There's no way. And again, I'm asking for identifiable information. I'm asking about, you know, where do these types of things happen? And what, you know, I'm looking for information, for example, but it's been very highly restricted and they don't want us to see that, I guess. And so it's interesting to me that we would have access to really very detailed information about, I guess, the entire county and more dynamically than what the health department would be willing to give us through our efforts, I guess, to look at that data. It's just, it's very old, at least two or three years old, and it's just not the same type of detail. So to me, it's a much different way to get this data potentially. I think that as a Board of Health, we ought to be interested in potentially looking at this and seeing what kind of things we can learn about our community.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be glad to support the motion this morning. I'd be glad to support the motion to defer this and get the content.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, we have a motion in a second. I don't see anyone else asking to speak. And this motion is to defer this for future date. So Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I think we are down to the item for legislative issues. I don't think we have anything to do with that. So we need to recess the Board of County Commissioners setting as a governing body at Sedgwick County and call to order the Board of County Commissioners setting as a governing body of Fire District Number One. And we'll do that. And Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau? Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Chairman Enry?
Present. Next item?
Public agenda.
I don't see anyone rising to speak, and I don't have any requests, so next item, please.
New business. Item A, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2018 Fire District One budget and establish public budget hearings on July 19th and July 30th, 31st, excuse me, 2017.
All right. Hello again, Commissioners. Lindsay Purviso, your CFO. This item is identical in purpose to the item you approved earlier for the Sedgwick County budget. The publication sets the maximum budget for the Fire District at $17,957,696 and establishes a maximum property tax levy of $16,458,571 based on the intent of maintaining the same property tax rate as the current year of 18.414 mils. In addition to a public hearing to be held on Wednesday, July 19th at 9:00 a.m. here in this room, the publication outlines that the final public budget hearing will be held here at the county courthouse on Monday, July 31st at 6:00 p.m. Budget adoption, of course, scheduled for August 2nd. I'll be happy to stand for any questions. If there are none, I recommend you authorize the publication and the motion I put, or I gave you earlier for the Sedgwick County budget, the fire motion is just below.
All right. Thank you. And I believe we've had already the presentation on this. So Commissioners, any comment or question? Seeing none, I will move that we authorize the publication of a notice of public hearing regarding Fire District One's 2018 budget. Publication shall include a total budget of $17,957,696 and an ad valorem property tax levy of $16,458,571, which is approximately equivalent to 18.414 mils based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
There are no other items on the Fire District Agenda, so Commissioners, if there's something you want to bring up, now is the time. If not, we will adjourn the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners setting as a governing body of Fire District One, call back to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. And Commissioners, we are now at the time for other, I believe. Are there any other items that you wish to bring up or speak about today? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'd just like to say that next Tuesday at noon, we're opening the new Meridian Street in Wichita. That was a project that started when I was on the Wichita City Council. It would be south of Kellogg, all the way down to Pawnee. It was a huge project, and it's taken almost six years to get done. And so I'm excited to join Councilmember Bluebaum next Tuesday as we open up a great new investment and a great, wonderful street with plenty of drainage out to the Arkansas River. So it's, it was a long time coming. It was the last major street that hadn't been completely revamped in that whole region. Seneca and West and so on and so forth had all been done except that one. So it's pretty exciting times in southwest Wichita.
Well, that is good news. And congratulations. It's a long time coming, huh?
Yeah, I'm very proud of it.
Anyone else? Seeing no one wishing to speak, and we have no more from the manager, the counselor, then that being the case, we will be adjourned.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to county commission broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
You're watching KPTS, Hutchinson, Wichita, public television for South Central Kansas. We now join our regularly scheduled program already in progress.
Proposed by Darwin's theory. Darwin soon realized that orchid flowers were very different from those of other plants. Many familiar flowers have identical petals arranged around the sexual organs of the plant. In orchid flowers, one petal is often very different. We now know that this is because orchids have a peculiarity in their genetic code known by botanists as the orchid code. This allows orchids to evolve individual petals in different ways, creating this extraordinary diversity. In particular, the lower petal, the lip, has evolved an almost unbelievable variety of shapes and designs. The lip has allowed orchids to come up with some very unusual ways of making sure pollination happens. One of the strangest examples grows here in the Appalachian Mountains in the United States. These ancient mountains are cloaked in spectacular forests. Growing beneath the canopy are several kinds of lady's slipper orchids. The pink lady's slipper. The yellow lady's slipper. The lip is swollen into a huge hollow structure bearing some resemblance to a shoe, the lady's slipper, with a hole at the top. Bees are drawn to the bright colors of the slipper and eventually enter the hole. Once inside, they can't get out the way they came in, the sides are too steep and slippery. But there is a way out, a narrow passage at the base of the flower. It's a tight squeeze, but the bee can sense freedom and keep struggling. This escape route forces the bee close to the orchid's pollen, and as it passes, the orchid glues a sticky mass of pollen to its back. A little disorientated by its adventure, the bee soon recovers. And this is the reason for the diversity of orchid flowers, as Darwin realized long ago. It's aimed at one thing, persuading pollinators to carry pollen from one plant to another. The bee is soon drawn to another lady's slipper and once again ends up inside the hollow This time, it knows the way out. And as it squeezes through the narrow channel, the pollen on its back is rubbed off on the female part of the flower. Success for the orchid. Fertilization by an unrelated individual produces healthier seedlings. This is true for many plants and animals, including humans. And Darwin's particular interest in how orchids avoid inbreeding was perhaps more than just academic. He married his first cousin, Emma, and two of their children died early in life. Darwin always felt guilty about this, wondering if marrying a relative was to blame. Perhaps these worries fueled his passion for studying orchids. One of his sons, Francis, helped these studies and made drawings to illustrate his father's They soon discovered another strange feature of orchid flowers, one which shapes much of the orchid's intriguing life. All their pollen...